Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of Monday, November 27, 2023. I now call the meeting to order and I'll ask Commissioner Zick to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anna, will you please do roll call?
Chair Erath?
Present.
Vice Chair Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas?
Here.
Commissioner Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Vivar?
Present.
Commissioner Kleepack?
Present.
All right, thanks, Anna. I see no announcements or presentations, so that brings us to public comments, and these are for matters not listed on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to speak to an item that we are not hearing this evening, you're welcome to come to either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak and you'll hear a little ding at the one-minute mark giving you an indication that your time's almost up. So would anyone in chambers wish to speak? All right, seen none. Anna, do we have anyone online?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. This brings us to Planning Commissioner's comments and suggestions, starting with Commissioner Rojas.
I have none, other than coming everybody back and hope you guys had a good Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. My comment is a repeat of one that I make periodically, particularly when we have a chamber full of people. I was talking to two people on the phone today about items on our agenda, and both people asked me where they could get information about staff reports. I said, "Well, it's the city's website," and I provided them a link to that. And then I said, "You know, you can sign up on the city's website to get e-notifications, an email sent to you whenever an agenda's posted for a city council meeting or an agenda's posted for a Planning Commission meeting, and all the staff reports are there." And it's a great way to stay informed as to what's going on with the city. You can get notifications about the Parks Commission, the Arts Commission, all the activities going on in the city. People seem to be unaware of this. And if you go to the city's website, under the community link right on the homepage, you'll find e-notifications, and you can sign up, put a little checkbox next to all the different things you're interested in, and get email notifications. I'm happy to see the chamber full of people, and hopefully you'll keep coming and stay informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. And that's a great point. I'll also mention that if anyone hasn't seen the change, the city flopped over to a new app so that you can send your notifications in, keep up with all the information. It's called Costa Mesa 311, if you want to go to the Play Store and check that out. All right, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade?
Just really wanted to, again, echo Commissioner Zick's comments. It's really great note, really great to see the community out and supporting issues that are directly affecting us, so kudos to y'all. And I also just wanted to acknowledge Native Heritage Month, right? This is something that we can continue to celebrate year after year. I know we were having some great talks with the city about how our city is really built on native land and how we have this beautiful space in Fairview Park that has some great archaeological sites. So just a great opportunity to remind everyone to visit it and learn more about where we all come from and also pray for peace.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Commissioner Kleepack?
Nothing for me at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for making that public information announcement. Always great to see a full chamber, glad that we have public participation. If only we had a full house like this every night that we do Planning Commission, that'd be great. But I'm sure people do watch online and read about things that happen at Planning Commission occasionally in articles. So thank you all for coming tonight and your participation is much appreciated that we have public comment for items tonight. And I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving and wanted to give a big shout-out to staff for all of their hard work all the time in preparing these meetings and for city council meetings. I know that they work many hours behind the scenes to make sure that us as commissioners are up to speed and city council, and so just wanted to thank you for your tireless effort and your dedication to the city of Costa Mesa. So Ms. Lee, Mr. Drapkin, Anna Partita, and everybody else, thank you. And that's it from me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Vice Chair Toller?
I don't have any comments tonight. I'll just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and say thanks for coming.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. I'll echo the sentiments of my colleagues up here and wish everyone a happy belated Thanksgiving. I hope everyone had a nice evening with family and friends, or however you celebrate that it was a good one. Outside of that, I also want to welcome some of the students from Newport Mesa Unified who are here because of their Government and American Democracy classes. We always enjoy having our local school district kids here to take account of how we do things. So thank you for being here. And then on a personal note, I'll mention that I got a new dog yesterday. He's five months old. I got him from Priceless Pets, which is the no-kill shelter on Newport Boulevard. And humorously, I didn't like that his name was Ringo, because Ringo's my fourth favorite beetle. So I renamed him Willie Nelson, just so everyone knows. Okay, so with that said, we'll move things along. But thank you for being here, everyone. It's very nice to see everyone in chambers. This brings us to our consent calendar. We have one consent calendar item tonight. On that note, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for the discussion. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. So that brings us to Anna, if you'd please read the title.
Consent calendar item number one, November 13, 2023, unofficial meeting minutes.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments on the minutes? All right, seen none. May I have a motion? Motion made by Vivar. What's your motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Toller, do you wish to speak to your motion, Commissioner?
No.
All right, Vice Chair?
No.
All right, anyone else?
Nope.
All right, let's bring it to a vote.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. It's a good start. This brings us to public hearing. We have two public hearing items tonight. Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing item number one.
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-45 for a new public charter high school, Vista Meridian Global Academy, and a minor conditional use permit for small car parking located at 1620 Sunflower Avenue. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. Let's start to my right, Commissioner Rojas.
I have none, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick.
I had a brief conversation this afternoon with Mr. Walid Kazi, who offered one of the public comments that we received today.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade?
Some months ago, I might have met at a public event, I think, the potential principal of the school, but I want to say this was over the summertime, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Vice Chair.
No.
All right, Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I received an email from someone. It was a support email. I believe it was sent to all commissioners and city staff. So I read the email, but unfortunately did not have time to respond.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kleepack?
I had a phone conversation earlier today with one of the business owners from the neighboring buildings and heard their concerns, which were echoed in some of the public comments here regarding ingress and egress. And I heard out the concerns and I am able to still keep an open mind and hear other perspectives. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Similarly, I've held many calls and received emails from a variety of people on this particular item. Go ahead and start by mentioning that I met up with staff today on the adjacent property to the subject property and met John Chernilla, Justin Nassy, Ed Salsido, and Dan Bistini, and we did a walk-around on the adjacent property to discuss transportation and circulation. I also held a call and received an email from Executive Director of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce, David Hathcock, and we spoke for a few minutes. I also talked to a trustee from the Newport Mesa Unified School District, and I also talked to the Assistant Superintendent of Education, or I can't remember his full title, but Jeff Trader with NMUSD as well. Beyond that, I can't recall anything else, and through all those calls, I am not biased in any way. So I'd just like to mention that. So with that said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Villalobos to present the item. Mr. Villalobos?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Villalobos, and I am a assistant planner with the Development Services Department, presenting planning application 22-45, which is a conditional use permit application to allow a new public charter high school named Vista Meridian Global Academy to operate in an existing industrial office building, along with a minor conditional use permit application for the allowance of small car parking on-site. The project site is located at 1620 Sunflower Avenue, which is located northwest of the intersection of Sunflower Avenue and Highland Avenue. The project location is composed of two parcels, each containing existing buildings. 1620 Sunflower is currently developed with a 37,455-square-foot, two-story industrial office building and roughly 177 parking spaces, while 1600 Sunflower has an existing 35,621-square-foot, two-story industrial office building and 85 parking spaces. The project location is accessed via two driveway approaches, with one on Sunflower Avenue and the other on Highland Avenue. The subject property is zoned MP or industrial park and is surrounded by similarly zoned parcels to the north and west, with some planned development industrial properties located to the east and south. In addition, the project is not located within any designated specific plan area. The project site is surrounded by a mix of industrial and office land uses to the northeast and west and the Soco Commercial Center to the south. As indicated in Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Land Use Table 13-30, schools including primary, secondary, and colleges are conditionally permitted in the MP zone, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. This application is for the establishment of a new public charter high school. Vista Meridian proposes a maximum student enrollment of 500 students with a maximum of 125 students per grade. The proposed charter high school will include grades 9 through 12 and will require a total of 51 employees, which would include 36 full-time and 15 part-time staff members. The proposed hours of operation for a typical school day are to be from 8:30 a.m. to 4 o'clock p.m. to accommodate the state-mandated start time for high schools of no earlier than 8:30 a.m. per Senate Bill Number 328. Vista Meridian maintains that Fridays will include an early dismissal at 2 p.m. Pickup and drop-off hours will be designated to start no sooner than 7 a.m. up until schooltime at 8:30 a.m. for student drop-off and from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. for pickup. Site circulation will be monitored and coordinated per the queuing plan provided by Vista Meridian, and staff will be on hand to ensure efficiency for moving vehicles through the site. In addition, Vista Meridian proposes to offer free transportation to and from the school via the charter's own fleet of vehicles, which would include both buses as well as shuttle vans for transporting students to and from predetermined locations. All school activities will take place under roof, and there are no recreational or lunch facilities located outside of the building, meaning students will remain inside until classes have ended or they have been permitted to leave the school. There are no major tenant improvements to the existing building proposed. The existing square footage and the height of the building shall remain as-is, and there will be no major changes to the interior of the building for the purposes such as constructing new classrooms or kitchen facilities. Vista Meridian is currently proposing seismic upgrades to the building to meet California Building Code requirements for a public school. The project site has been restripped and will add a pedestrian pathway for accessibility purposes leading from Highland Avenue. In addition, a total of 14 small car parking spaces have been included in the proposal, which is under the 10% total maximum limit for small car parking as specified in CMMC Section 13-94. In addition, bicycle racks will also be installed at the school to help promote the bike-to-school program to be implemented by Vista Meridian. Shown on the site above is the site plan for the project. As previously mentioned, the site is composed of two existing commercial buildings, of which the proposed public charter high school is to be located on Parcel 1, shown in gray. The project site was previously subdivided, and the parking lot is shared with a reciprocal access agreement existing for both buildings. In total, 152 parking spaces will be available on Parcel 1 and 85 parking spaces will be available on Parcel 2. Per the parking analysis detailed in the staff report, 142 spaces will be required by the existing office building in Parcel 2, while 51 spaces will be required for the employees of the proposed school, leaving a surplus of 44 parking spaces to accommodate overflow parking for miscellaneous purposes. Vista Meridian has indicated that no student will be allowed to drive to their campus and have estimated that approximately 40% of the enrolled students will utilize the free transportation services provided by the school. As such, it is anticipated that additional parking for students will not be required. Also shown on the site plan is the queuing plan for picking up and dropping off students from the project site. The inflow of traffic will be from the driveway leading from Highland Avenue. The vehicle line will wrap around the backside of the proposed school, and a designated drop-off location will be located on the west side of the building. All vehicles exiting the site will be directed back to the same driveway on Highland, where they will make a right turn only to exit the site. The vehicle queuing line is indicated on the above site plan with green directional arrows. The pedestrian walkways are shown with blue arrows, and potential bike traffic is shown in pink. Shown here is the first, is the floor plan layout for the first floor of the proposed charter high school. The recreational areas and lunch area will be located on this floor, along with some administrative office space and designated open classroom spaces throughout the building. These open classrooms will be supplemented with breakout rooms intended to help promote and provide more individualized learning environments for the students. The recreational areas will consist of an indoor basketball court, indoor pickleball court, and a weight room. The lunch area will not include any cafeteria or cooking facilities, and all food will be brought in to the school from outside vendors. Shown here is the floor plan layout for the second floor of the proposed charter high school. The second floor includes less square footage than the first, as the recreational area is open to the roof above. The second floor area will house additional classroom space as well as space for staff meetings. There will be no permanent partitions added for the establishment of designated classroom areas. All existing enclosed spaces within the building are already existing. Shown on the site above are some site photos taken from my visit on October 16. Photo 1 shows the front entrance of the proposed public charter high school. Photo 2 shows the indoor basketball court to be used for recreational purposes. Photo 3 shows the designated lunch area within the existing building. Photo 4 shows the proposed pickup and drop-off area located on the west side of the building. Not shown are the roll-up doors leading directly into the basketball court area. Photo 5 shows the current layout of the previous office building with an example of a breakout room shown in the rear. Photo 6 shows additional classroom area located on the second floor of the building. Project-specific conditions of approval have been added to the application to address some potential concerns that may result from the approval of this project. Some of these conditions include limitations placed on the maximum number of students and employees, a requirement to maintain a minimum of 152 parking spaces, limitations placed on the hours of operation for the school, and a requirement to reevaluate the parking and traffic circulation plans once operational. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA per CEQA Guidelines 15301 existing facilities and approve planning application 22-45 subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Villalobos. That was great. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item? Starting with Commissioner Zick?
Two quick questions. First of all, is this location within the Measure X zone?
I believe that it would be within the green zone area.
Okay, and then assuming that this were approved, would that mean that new cannabis businesses that want to locate in the green zone would have to be at least 1,000 feet away from this school?
So the separation requirement is strictly for retail cannabis storefronts, which are only allowed in commercial zones, so those would not be impacted by the establishment of the school at this location.
So cannabis business could move in next door, would be no problem?
Non-retail cannabis store would be able to.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Vivar?
All right, yeah, just a couple of questions here. So how many bike racks would be proposed by the high school?
So currently, they are proposing six bike racks to be located on the exterior building, as well as two additional bike racks located within the existing building. The addition of the two interior bike racks are for long-term storage, as the applicants have indicated, whereas the exterior bike racks are for daily use.
And these eight bike racks are double-sided?
I believe so, although I don't know for sure. There was no indication about what type of bike rack were to be installed.
So we don't know the specific number of bikes that would be accommodated by these?
Commissioner Vivar, I did have a conversation with the Public Works Department, and we spoke about this early in the planning process of this. They're going to look at it, if approved and once approved, about requiring a certain percentage of bike racks. That might exceed what they have currently, but this will be based on their secondary review of the project.
Right, so, but we don't know an expected number of bike racks that would be accommodated?
They're offering, yeah, they're offering a bike-to-school program, so we'll work with them a little bit more to figure out how many students might use that program, and Public Works might also offer some suggestions as to how many is necessary.
Yeah, because I'm, so staff would handle the number, because I'm thinking here, just doing the math. I mean, 500 students, 40% expected to take advantage of the buses and vans, and that leaves a large number of students that, I guess, would either be driven in, right, and dropped off by parents, or potentially bike, and so staff would make sure that adequate number of bike racks be provided to actually make sure that bike-to-school program works?
Correct.
Okay. So something in the presentation kind of got my attention. It said that the parking and circulation plan, once operational, would be reevaluated. What exactly is meant by that?
So we currently have a condition of approval in place. The exact language of the condition states that during operation, the applicant shall evaluate site access during peak times to identify any operational issues with vehicle parking and queuing. If operational problems arise, the applicant shall recruit a qualified professional to prepare a traffic circulation study identifying causes and solutions.
So, but staff wouldn't be making the, sort of the reevaluation that would be the applicant and only if there were to be circulation problems?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Will staff be requiring that the, will city staff be requiring that the school staff that will be managing the parking and the circulation be trained for, I guess, for vehicle, directing vehicles safely in and around the site?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Vivar, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, so will the city be requiring the school to, I guess, have special training for any staff that are going to be outside, sort of managing the parking during pickup and drop-offs?
We have included a similar condition like that in some of the past proposals that the commission has seen. This one does not include it. However, it could be added if the commission felt necessary.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions at the moment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple of questions that kind of jumped out at me as I was listening to this. I wanted to kind of navigate the waters on this. First of all, did I understand correctly, there's no onsite parking for students there at the location? Was that, did I hear that correctly?
So there's no parking designated specifically for students. Essentially, the intent of the school is to not allow any students to drive their own vehicles to the campus. Essentially, the only options that they have are either utilizing the free transportation services provided by Vista, or biking to school, or being picked up and dropped off by a guardian.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. So the key word there was a free transportation provided to the location by Vista, correct?
That's correct.
Then there's also free lunch and meals?
Yeah, I would defer to the applicants to answer that question.
Okay, well, that bring, and then also, in the beginning, I also read it was tuition-free. So where are the funds coming from this school? Is it a private school, or how are they, how are they funding it?
So the charter school program is a quasi-public school, which basically means that they're funded by the state?
By the state?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't impact the local NMUSD's finances in any way?
So the monies that are funded for local school districts are impacted by charter schools? It all goes into one pool, and they have to share that.
And the last question then is, what is the local school district, what is their view on this? Have we heard from them?
I have not heard from the local school district directly.
No, sorry. Have they been contacted for a comment? Because this is kind of new to me right here.
Right, the way that the, and it was explained to me by the applicant, the applicant can explain a little bit more in detail, but the way that it was explained to me is that there's two processes to approve a charter school. And again, this is by way of the applicants. There is a process that allows a charter school to go via the local school district, like in this case, it would be the Newport Mesa District, or through the county, County School District. And the way that works is they, this school actually already has permission to operate through the County School District. They operate several other schools, so, and that's the process that they went through. I did speak to the applicant about a notification requirement to the local school district, and he was going to mention that at the meeting tonight.
Okay, perfect, then I'll wait for that. That's it, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Andrade?
Along those lines, you mentioned in your presentation that there is already enrollment for this high school, when, if, and when it opens, right? Like, there's already students ready to attend it.
So currently, the Vista Charter School, they operate a few other schools, of which one is an elementary school located in San Ana. They have indicated in their applicant letter that they currently have freshmen and sophomores, grades 9 and 10, that are currently enrolled at that school. So essentially, once the school becomes operational, those high school students, and only the high school students, will be transitioned over to the proposed campus. There will be additional grades as well, 11 and 12, and the applicants will explain in depth more their plan for enrollment at the school.
Got it. But essentially, those, I imagine those kids will level up, right, to the next grades. And so I guess maybe that's more of an applicant question on, like, how is this serving Costa Mesa, understanding now that the funding is going to come directly from our school district funding?
The funding doesn't go directly from the school district. It comes from the state, but that is the same funding that affects the school district. So it's one pool of money.
Got it.
So, yeah, so the school just, Costa Mesa would, in a sense, share that funding with the, all other charter schools. There's other ones that exist in the county, or in the Costa Mesa School District, I would assume.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be great to get more clarity as a, as a PTA parent on the side that gets to fundraise for activities at our school and is always advocating for equitable investment across our existing schools. So is there, from a city's perspective, what is the, like, the community's need for this? Like, when we talk about, right, it won't be detrimental to existing operations in the city? Like, is there, is there, you know, I don't know, something above and beyond that the school is bringing that our current school district isn't providing? Or is there an interest? Is there like a waiting list of Costa Mesa residents ready to go?
So that's an interesting question, and it was something that we kind of thought about from a staff perspective in regards to what should be the land use focus with regards to the proposal. And we looked at the conditional findings, the CUP findings, that is, and we felt that the application does comply with the CUP findings. With regards to your question about uniqueness or what it offers, I believe that is a charter school state review criteria. I don't know that for a fact. It's outside of the land use world, so to speak, but I believe that is part of the world that they live in, the school, the charter school that is, with regards to getting approval for a charter school within a certain area. Obviously, charter schools offer different programs that are, that vary and differ from local public schools, traditional public schools. A good example is maybe what they're required to do from the perspective of whether it be recreational areas, class times, or what have you. The applicant is certainly the more knowledgeable on that basis. I can tell you from, just circling back around, from a land use perspective, staff is recommending approval of the project based on land use criteria. So not so deeply dived into the criteria that might revolve in between the district and the charter school itself.
We're so fortunate to have multifaceted commissioners that can help guide the conversation. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. On the heels of what you mentioned, I'll just briefly say that, to the best of my understanding, Newport Mesa Unified is a basic aid or community-funded school, so I think most of the money comes from our local property taxes to fund schools and not from the state. So I just, I just wanted to maybe ask that of the applicant later to make a determination like, this is not State of California funding billions of dollars, this is Costa Mesa and Newport Beach money that's getting split. So I'd like to ask a little bit about that later. Commissioner Klepak?
Yeah, so I, I live by a fast food location that has a lot of lines and queuing issues, and I noticed that people don't always follow signs or direction. I'm just curious how the Sunflower exit and entrance will be controlled? I know the intent is to have everybody go through Highland, but if it's busy, people tend to kind of zip in where they think is going to be quickest. Will that be coned off? Will that be staffed?
So the applicants have indicated on their queuing plan that they do intend to have not only staff present to direct the flow of traffic, but also cones and other methods to help control the flow of traffic, specifically for the driveway approach along Sunflower Avenue. That's also a access point utilized by the adjacent property to the south of it, located at 1600 Sunflower. So nowhere in the reciprocal access agreement does it allow or stipulate that they don't, they would have the ability to essentially close off that for the purposes of monitoring traffic flow into the, into the property. So as far as that's concerned, I believe staff included the condition of approval specifically for the reevaluation of the queuing plan. If at a point it becomes an issue that that specific driveway approach is being utilized and is impacting the flow of traffic into and out of the property, we would have to address it then.
And I didn't recall seeing this, but did we get any comments from the party at 1600?
No, we haven't received any comment from them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Vice Chair, do you have anything?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So when I saw this on the agenda, a charter school, you know, charter schools are a little controversial for a few reasons, and it has to do with things that people have mentioned already, whether they're for-profit, or where the funding comes from, and the credential to teachers, all those sorts of things. And I felt a little pressured, like, oh my God, I got to figure this stuff out and learn and land somewhere. But I just want to kind of confirm that our decision tonight, what's, what are appropriate considerations and what are inappropriate considerations? So I'm operating under the understanding that we're looking at CUP findings, purely land use decisions and whether this is compatible with the vicinity of where it's proposed and consistent with the policy of the general plan. Is that, is that correct? Do you want to provide any help on that?
No, I think what I would just mention is just, I'd echo what I said before. The charter school requirements are separate from the local land use decisions. There may be policy overlap, potentially, depending on what policy. There's a lot of general plan policies, and they might veer into that as a, as an issue. However, from the perspective of review, I would separate your considerations from what the charter school requirements are, because that'll be done at a different level under a different discretion, and stay focused on the land use, like you mentioned, the findings and the general plan policies.
Okay, thank you. There, students aren't allowed outside. I saw it during the day, during the school day. I saw that in the packet, and I just want to confirm that, is that anything, is that imposed on them by the city in any way? Is that some sort of weird noise ordinance thing? Or is that their own policy, their decision to do that?
So essentially, that was a bit of a self-imposed policy that, that the Vista School included in their proposal. Essentially, there were previous discussions about the possibility of potentially including some, some sort of outdoor facilities, but because of the required parking and the required landscaping that are currently existing on-site, the project would be brought out of conformance with the development standards for the industrial park zone if any of that were to be taken away for, for outdoor recreational or outdoor lunch areas. So essentially, the school proposed having all recreational activities and lunch activities indoors, and also mentioned the possibility of, at some point, potentially using city park facilities in the future, but because there weren't any prior agreements in place, that wasn't included as part of the proposal and would just be left on the table for a possible later discussion.
Okay, so, well, my follow-up question was going to be whether it would be an issue from the city's perspective if in a few years they decided to have some outdoor activity on-site. But you're saying because of the parking and landscaping requirements, that might just be a moot point, because it would have to take place where there's currently required parking?
We could look at that if, if and when that happens.
Okay.
And look at that, for, for example, the commission looked at another school approximately a year ago, and they had limited areas, exterior, and it worked fine. So, but yeah, I think that we could do that. We could look at it, and that probably will be dependent on what they see their need is. They might take some empirical data and find out, this is what we're going to need, and here's our options. They might be able to work out something with the adjacent building, property owner. There might be a lot of avenues.
Okay. All right, regarding how kids are going to get to school, the applicant indicated that some would come with free transportation via vans, and some would come by bikes, and they mentioned the Santa Ana River Trail. So I just want to ask staff about our bike and pedestrian facilities surrounding the school, and whether there's any precedent or protocol for us if this were approved and, and if this school started operating with the city, do anything to improve any of those facilities? I think, so, the bikes specifically from the Santa Ana River Trail, but also the bike lanes if people, if students are coming from the east or other directions. And also, high schoolers, I don't know the rules here. I don't think they're going to be able to leave campus during the school, but before and after school, everybody that went to high school knows that you kind of wander off, you go to those third places around after school, and you look at the map, it's OC Mix, it's right there, right? So specifically that intersection of Sunflower and Highland, is that the best we can do for 14, 15, 16-year-olds?
So, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Toller, if I can answer those questions. Yeah, there are definitely opportunities to improve bike facilities. As you mentioned, this location has bike lanes on both streets, as well as we have Santa Ana River Trail, let's adjust into it. Another project, adjacent project, has proposed significant improvements to bike lanes on Sunflower. So if that happens, I'm sure, you know, that's, that's, that'll be a great advantage for the school. There are opportunities if we can, if we have a project in that area for resurfacing and all that stuff. We can look at narrowing lanes and making the bike lanes wider and doing some buffered bike lanes like we have done at other locations. So there are definitely opportunities to do that on Sunflower and on Highland, too. And regarding the Highland-Sunflower intersection itself, we can implement the leading pedestrian interval, for example, and, and improve that crossing. We have crossings on all four legs of the intersection, which is great, so we just need to make some tweaks to the timing and we can make it work.
Okay. Yeah, those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Segura.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Any follow-ups? All right, I have no questions of staff at this time. I think they'll come out after some questions of the applicant. So I might talk to you guys later. All right. We'll now move on to the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up to the podium. And if you would, please state your name for the record. Let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree to them.
Well, thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. My name's Joseph Smith. I'm with California Coastal Works, and I've been working with Vista on this application since we submitted it last December. So I think I just want to really make the point and just thank staff for their time. We've been working with staff over the last year, and I think the project is better for it. We've been able to really clarify a lot of questions and information, especially with, with the programming, and also conducted that extensive traffic study that we did with the city. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Good questions tonight. We will be touching on a lot of that, a lot of those answers as part of our presentation, so just listen in for that. I did want to share, there was one point made about 1600, the corner property, so that's under the same ownership as the parcel we're on. Same owner has both sites, so is in support of this use. And with that, we have read the staff report, we've read the whole packet, read the resolution, and are in full agreement with the conditions of approval, including those that were noted by the planning staff this evening. And that works within our program as well, and they're reasonable and feasible for us to implement. So with that, I'll introduce Colin Felch, who's the Assistant Superintendent with Vista. He'll be walking through school operations and a little more site-specific context, and will be available for any questions. And also appreciate the comments and clarifications about the CUP and the findings and so forth with this being a school use. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Good, good evening. Pleasure to be here. My name is Dr. Colin Felch, as Joseph mentioned. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Vista Charter Public Schools. I'm also happy to be here with a number of students, staff, and families from Vista. And I also want to give a special thank you to David Hathcock from the Chamber of Commerce for also being here and in support of our project. For Vista, our motto is "We Transform the School Experience," and that is exactly what we want to talk about here today, about providing a transformational educational opportunity for the Costa Mesa community. And it's really summed up in the last sentence of our vision statement that reads, "Vista is a school where students enter to learn but leave ready to humanely serve through a deeper understanding of their role in impacting positive change on the world around them." Next slide, please. Thank you. So let me talk about the site a little bit specifically, and why we ended up deciding on this site being the perfect site for our school. So not only is it a gorgeous building with amazing amenities, as you can see in these photos, much nicer than most other school buildings, especially charter school buildings that I've been in, but this also offers indoor athletic facilities and ample onsite parking, two things that are very hard to find, especially for schools. So that was, that was a big key for us, as well as the proximity, as mentioned earlier, to the Santa Ana River Bike Trail, and I will be touching on that as well later in this presentation. This also offers a unique educational environment that aligns very well with our school model, and I'll also be touching on that when I talk about the school model a little more. I do want to note that there are two buildings, as mentioned, the 1600 and 1620 building on this location, on two separate parcels. Both of those buildings are currently vacant. Vista would occupy the larger building, the 1620 building, and it would improve the vacancy situation in this area, and perhaps Vista's presence will also spur other vacancies to fill as well. Next slide, please. So when we talk about community and community involvement, that is something that is extremely important for us. As a school, we focus on building community both inside and outside of the school. Inside of the school, focusing on building community with students and staff and parents, and outside of the school, really focusing on outreach to neighbors and building really strong community and business partnerships. We have conducted, proactively conducted outreach to our neighbors around the community, including the Seggerstrom Foundation, since the Harbor Gateway area is right across the street from there. We've had two very productive meetings with the Seggerstrom Foundation staff, and actually they are in support of the project, and we have a good neighbor agreement with the Seggerstrom Foundation. We've also met a number of times with representatives from Soco, and our principal, who is here today, Mr. Trent Spire, has also participated in a number of community events hosted by Soco. We've met with Rose Equities, FedEx, just to name a few, because we really want to focus on getting started on the right foot, building strong, lasting, mutually beneficial partnerships with our neighbors. Because we also want to focus on making sure that we aren't going to be disrupting the business operations for our neighbors. And as mentioned before, this is going to be a closed campus. We will have supervision staff during pickup and drop-off to make sure that the queuing line is efficient. We won't have students driving or parking on campus, and we are estimating about 40% of our student population will be using our free transportation through our three buses and nine, 10-person vans that we do have. Next slide, please. So getting into the school model, and I could talk about this for a long time, but I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible. But Vista Meridian is a free public charter school authorized through the Orange County Department of Education. Now, as part of the charter petition process last year that we went through, we did reach out to Newport Unified School District, and we do look forward to working collaboratively with the, with the district to serve the Costa Mesa community. And I do want to quickly touch on the funding issue. I know it's a little bit separate from the, the school model. Funding is actually from the state. It is designated per pupil, so where the student enrolls, that's where the funding So where the student enrolls, that's where the funding from the, the state comes from. So, sorry, that's a, that's an aside from, from the, the focus on the school model. We are, we're really here as a charter school to provide an option for families. Because we know that every student learns differently. And not one schooling model is the perfect schooling model for every single student. And so we are here to provide an option for families because we, we just want to make sure that every, every parent, every student can have a, a school that is, that they believe that is the best for them. What we do offer is small class sizes, usually around 22 to 25 students in, for, for our high school classes. And they're highly differentiated through our personalized mastery learning model where teachers support students on their individual journey to standards mastery. Therefore, for example, if, if a student is excelling, he or she could advance at a faster pace and does not need to wait for the rest of the class to, to move on to the next standard, per se. On the flip side, if a student needs more time to master a concept or a standard, they can then receive additional support needed in order to master that concept. Because we do not want our students to go through grade level after grade level just seeing content, but never actually mastering that content. Vista Meridian is also working with our local community college partners, Orange Coast College, Santa Ana College and Coastline College, to offer dual enrollment where students can receive simultaneous high school and college credit for classes and progress, progress towards receiving as much as an associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma and progressing towards receiving industry certifications through our career technical education pathways. You might also see the words "Global Academy" in our name and wonder what that's all about. At Vista, we, we focus on educating our students to become what we call globally competent citizens of the world. And we do that through our four global performance outcomes, which are first to investigate the world, to recognize perspectives around them, to communicate ideas and to then take action. In a nutshell, we want our students to think global and act local. And that, again, goes back to, to the last sentence of our vision, vision statement where we want students to enter to learn, but leave ready to humanely serve through a deeper understanding of their role in impacting a positive change on the world around them. The last part of the school model that I really want to touch on is project-based learning, and that's near and dear to, to what we do at Vista Meridian. A lot of this has been inspired through some of the other more innovative educational models in, in California, such as High Tech High in San Diego, as well as Da Vinci Schools in El Segundo. And in a nutshell, we want to minimize the amount of time that our students are passively sitting in a seat, in a lecture, receiving information and maximize the amount of time that they're collaborating with their peers on real-world projects, actively engaged in the type of work, situations and thinking processes that adults engage in, in the real world every single day. And this is why this specific building is the ideal layout for our type of innovative educational model. In what we consider a block period, let's say 90 minutes, we will have our classes meet together for what we call a mini lesson, which is about 15 to 20 minutes. And during that time, teachers are providing brief, a brief overview of academic content. Then the majority of that, the time is spent in small groups or individually working on projects that they help design. During this time, this also allows our teachers, our teacher assistants, to work one-on-one conferencing individually with each student, creating plans, assessing students on their journey to academic mastery. And that's where that individualized model comes in. Next slide, please. Touching on the, the school operations a little bit, I do want to clarify one or two things that were said earlier. This is an actively operating school. We are currently serving grades ninth, 10th and 11th grade. The, the report that was suggesting it was ninth and 10th grade was actually from the spring, when it was only ninth and 10th grade. This year, we have added, added 11th grade. So we do actively, are actively operating ninth, 10th and 11th grade and will do so with 12th grade next year. The plan is to open this new building after spring break, this next spring, and move in from our current location in April of 2024. As mentioned earlier, but I'll say it again, this will be a closed campus, meaning that students will not be coming and going during the school day, unless it's a field trip or unless they're, they're going on our transportation to a dual enrollment class, say at Orange Coast College or something like that. But they will not be walking off campus, per se. No student driving will be allowed and no student parking will be allowed. And we will have staff members situated at specific locations to help manage the flow of traffic for pickup and drop off. And I do want to mention that at our current sites, one of which has just under 900 students currently, we do the same type of pickup and drop off. And even at just under 900 students, we have plenty of queuing space that would even fit in, in what's projected in, in this building. So I did want to, to mention that. And a lot of, a lot of the reasoning for that is, one, because we do have a significant transportation operation with 40% of our students coming and going from school with our buses and vans. But also because we have a number of families who pick up and drop off their kids either well before the school day starts or well after the school day starts. Just because the school day starts at 8:30, ends at 4 o'clock, doesn't mean that all of our students are coming and going directly at those times. We have a number of extracurricular activities and clubs and other, other types of student activities and athletics that our, our students get dropped off early for. And they also stay later in the evening. And many of our parents are working parents. They have to drop off their kids early. I, I'm one of them. And I would not be able to drop my kids off at 8:30. And so we, we have the ability to drop kids off at as early as 7:00 AM. And that hour and a half in the morning, where instead of having a 10 to 15-minute period of when all of the cars are coming, you have an hour and a half in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, that significantly reduces the, the, the queuing of traffic. And one other thing that we are really promoting is the Bike to School program. We're excited how conveniently located we are from the Santa Ana River Trail. And we definitely want our students to take advantage of that program, too. Next slide. And I want to, to sum up by saying thank you. Thank you to, to staff in the planning department for your, your tireless work on this. And we truly look forward to serving the, the Costa Mesa community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Felch. Colleagues, if I may, I'll take a first swing. That's okay with everyone? All right. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. All right. So if you're primarily focused on serving students in Santa Ana, why aren't you opening up another campus in Santa Ana? Why Costa Mesa?
We are not primarily focused on serving students in Santa Ana. We, we actually are very excited to also serve students in Costa Mesa.
I can see that being in the, in the long term. But off the bat, you're taking your current, or your ideas to take your current pool of students, bring them to Costa Mesa, have them educated in Costa Mesa. Why not just focus, focus your efforts in Santa Ana?
Well, I, I think that's a two-pronged answer. So first, this type of opportunity, this type of building seemed to be the perfect opportunity where we feel like it aligns extremely well with our educational approach, one that we could not find elsewhere. And in addition, when we submitted our, our charter petition a year and a half ago, we did so as a, a countywide. And we, we did want to serve more than just the city of Santa Ana. And so, yes, while we will serve students in Santa Ana, we also are very excited to serve the students in the community of Costa Mesa.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, how do you get paid?
How do I get paid?
No, I mean, how does, how does the school get paid specifically? Is it 100% state funding? Or is there a possibility that you would be taking local tax revenue to help supplement your?
It is state and federal funding.
It is? So there's zero local funding?
No. So we, yeah, unless it's fundraised, like through, through a PTA.
Okay.
Oh, do you, oh, yes. I'm glad to answer that question for you. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Commission, my name is Richard Hansberger. I'm counsel for Vista Charter Public Schools. I've been working with charter schools since the inception of the Charter Schools Act in 1993. So if Newport Mesa, Costa Mesa Unified is a basic aid school district, congratulations, you're doing very well. What that means is that your property tax revenue far exceeds what the state is obligated to pay on a per pupil basis for every child in the state of California. So the majority of school districts, and the vast majority, are underfunded. They receive state apportionments to basically make up that gap in revenues. It's not a surprise, I looked at my grandparents' house on Margaret Drive down from Newport High School, it's worth a few million dollars now. It's not a surprise that a more affluent socio-economically advantaged communities, basic aid school districts are the norm. You basically have more property tax revenue, thus on a per pupil basis, you make more money than you need or than other school districts get in California. So we're not taking any money from the district. The money comes directly from the state and the state taxpayers throughout the state of California. Wanted to make sure I clarified that. We're also not for-profit. By law, we are nonprofit. So it's a tax-exempt nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll move on to my third question. It was actually, are you a profit or nonprofit? So you beat me to it. How exactly did you determine a need in this community in a school district that generally shows lower enrollment, i.e. a capacity to take on more students currently? Why open up in a, in a, within a district or not theoretically in the district, but alongside a district that already has a great capacity to continue serving the local education needs of K through 12?
The, the Costa Mesa community does have a, a great capacity. What we believe is we provide an alternative, a smaller school environment, an innovative educational model that some parents and some students might gravitate towards. And that, that's simply what we, what we focus on.
Is there anything specifically that Newport Mesa Unified is not doing that you could fill a gap, educationally, pedagogically?
Oh, I, I think that, I think the, the educational model that I described in the presentation, where we are focusing on a true individualized mastery-based model, that is, that is not being done currently. The second thing is smaller class sizes, where we have 22 to 25 students in a, in a classroom. Third thing is we are also, our, our global education model is unique to the city of Costa Mesa. I know that for sure. I did my dissertation on that work. And we are the only, only organization in Orange County that, that, the, the entire county that has that, that partnership with the International Studies Schools Network.
Okay. So I, I took away three points and feel free to, you know, add to it if I missed anything, Dr. Felch. So what you're saying is, is that your school program comports with mat, individual mastery of subjects, as where Newport Mesa Unified does not have individual mastery of subjects?
So when I say, i- i- it's kind of an educational term, so bear with me. So when I talk about personalized mastery learning, we are talking about individually conferring with every single student on a regular basis to, on their growth towards mastery of each academic standard. For example, our report card does not look like a district report card. Our students will not just get a grade in math and that's it. Our report cards are broken down by each academic standard, kind of like what an edu, an elementary school report card looks like. That provides a lot more detailed feedback to each student on what they need to work on and towards mastery of each academic standard. So when I talk about personalized mastery and how it's broken down on a much more detailed level, that, that's what I mean.
Okay. Moving, thank you. Moving on to, I guess it would be a part of the same theme. Individual mastery, are you familiar with the Monta Vista School within the district and how they do essentially what you're talking about?
A little bit. So we, so we are actually a part of the Mastery Transcript Consortium, which is a consortium of, of similar schools around the country. I do know that not, there aren't any Newport Mesa Unified School District schools in that consortium. And what this allows us to do is have this mastery transcript to send to colleges along with their high school transcript. And so this shows colleges, and even it, it could be prospective employers out of high school, the certain skills that students have shown mastery on, both academic as well as, as some non-academic standards. So you could, you could show colleges that you have shown mastery in, in teamwork or collaboration or, or things like that and be able to.
So is this like a, a consortium that only charters are allowed to be a part of?
Everyone is able to, to join this mastery consortium.
To your last, or your third point about global education, are you familiar that the district has an international baccalaureate program?
I am, and I am very well aware of the IB program. This is actually a slightly different program than IB. IB, IB is much more prescriptive. The, the program under the International Studies Schools Network is more of an overarching framework that we can then use our model for.
Okay. So, you know, correct me if, if I'm wrong, but it sounds like there are deviations in terms of what you're offering potentially, but nothing that's a sweeping new, novel program as compared to what's already offered in this community?
We could agree to disagree on that, I think.
I don't know. Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'd like to better understand that at some point. Thank you, Dr. Felch. I'll move on to my next question. Have you contacted Newport Mesa Unified? And when was that and what was the substance of that communication? And I'm only asking because it, it seems to be a requirement to have to contact the local school district to let them know.
Yeah, yeah. We, we did contact them as part of the charter petition process when we petitioned with the Orange County Department of Education. We contacted Newport Mesa. We also contacted a few other local school districts that at the time, we, we considered working with or setting roots within. But one of those was Newport Mesa. So we did contact them.
All right. And did they respond to your communication at all?
There, there was no response at that time, but that, we did send out that communication.
Okay.
To the, yeah, to the superintendent.
Okay, to Wes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. I guess you're familiar with the fact that our local school district is basic aid and community funded. Discuss that. Okay. Is there anything other than the concept of individual mastery, global education and potentially smaller class sizes that is different than what's offered through the programs in the district already?
So when I, when I talked about project-based learning, I'm sure you can say that every school does projects. I'm sure you can say that every school does projects. But not every school has the opportunity, or has the layout that we have and that we are proposing, where within each period, they are really just in the quote-unquote "classroom" or "learning space" for a fraction of the time. And then the rest of the time, that, let's say, the hour out of a 90-minute block period, they're then able to work with students who might be enrolled in another class on a collaborative interdisciplinary project. They are able to, and we're really trying to flip the model here, where every teacher is not going to have their own classroom. Every teacher is going to have an office, where they can then meet with each student individually, kind of like office hours during the actual class periods. Because we really want to focus on students driving their learning and scheduling meetings with their teachers and really minimizing that direct instruction time. That is definitely a different model than you would see elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Have you conducted any outreach into this community? And how have you justified need as far as, you know, how are Costa Masons interested in joining your school based on what you've done already outreach-wise? What have you learned?
Well, I've conducted some of the outreach. Our principal, Mr. Trent Spire, has done probably even more than I have, going to events, talking to families and such. But I have learned from talking to families that they're interested in this type of community. They're interested in a small school environment. They're interested in a school that is built around a different type of educational model that might be geared more towards what the actual workplace looks like. And in high school, when you're preparing for college and eventually the workplace, that is something that some families do gravitate towards.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any part of what you offer that has, how else could I put it? Is there a religious component to what you offer at your school?
No, we are a public school.
Okay. Are your teachers unionized?
Our teachers are not unionized. However, I do want to touch, our teachers are 100% credentialed.
I would hope so. But why aren't they unionized? Why can't they collectively bargain?
They have chosen not to unionize.
And they were given the option to unionize and they chose not to?
That's up to the teachers, and they, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Felch, I'll pass it along. Commissioner Zick.
Thank you. I've got just a few questions. Let me start with the spelling of your last name, since we didn't see it in the presentation.
Oh, my last name? Felch, F-E-L-C-H.
Okay, I've got it phonetically, but now I've got it correct.
There you go.
So I'm sure you're going to get a lot of questions about the nature of your educational program, even though I think you're aware our focus is largely going to be on land use and compatibility and the conditional use permit findings. But I too am curious about some of the educational aspects of your school. I was trying to determine what the focus or emphasis or difference was between your high school and the high schools that we already have. And if I was to ask you the general question or the ambiguous question, is your school better? I'm sure you would say, no, it's not better, it's different, then you would tell me how it's different. Of the 500 students that you expect to have, how many do you expect will be from Costa Mesa?
I would expect probably 50, 60%, half to two-thirds.
Okay, and why do you think Costa Mesa students will choose your high school over Estancia or Costa Mesa or Newport Harbor? Oh, by the way, my kids all went to public junior high and high school in the city, so just kind of where I'm coming from.
Sure.
Why will they choose your school?
Absolutely. Well, because, going back to, our school offers a small learning environment, where everyone knows everyone. Everyone knows every teacher, every student's name, has direct access, knows the principal. The principal is there around the school every single day.
Do you limit your enrollment?
Yes, yeah, we are limited to...
So it'll always be small class size?
Yes, it will always, yes.
Okay.
Correct. So that's number one. Number two, that a lot of the parents are very interested in is our project-based learning model through a global lens.
Let me ask you this question. If you're, and, don't let me cut you, I tend to do that, but if you want to say more, please.
Sure.
Okay. Let me use my words and say that maybe I'm hearing you describe how your school is better in that respect. Let me suggest that, you're saying that. If I'm involved with Estancia or Costa Mesa High and I listen to you describe all that, if I was to conclude, and I'm not sure they would, but if I was to conclude, if I'm them, that, yeah, I think Dr. Felch has something here. Yeah, it is a little better, so we're going to change. Would we be able to change? I say "we," Estancia, Costa Mesa, Newport, change and do what you're doing. Would we be able to do that?
I'm not sure. I don't know all the intricacies within the district. I think it's difficult, I will say, because of where the funding is put. And I say that because we put a vast majority of our funding to the school and have a very small centralized office on purpose. Because we want to be able to have very small class sizes with plenty of additional support with teacher assistants, intervention coordinators and such.
So I guess where I'm wondering is, if you've got a better idea, and clearly you've got the educational background in this area, I'm wondering, wouldn't it be more effective to touch more people by you working with Newport Mesa Unified School District to make their existing high schools better in the same respect that you're trying to make your school better?
Well, first, I would love to say that we are always 100% open for collaboration. As an educator, I'm here for the kids.
That's not quite my question.
Yeah. Okay. And to your question, I believe it does come back to where the funding is allocated and how you really focus your priorities and...
So I'm hearing you say you're having your own school driven more by funding decisions than by a unique educational experience?
I would say it's both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
In terms of these sports, will your school be part of any interschool league? Will you be playing basketball games against other high schools?
Yes, so we are currently already CIF school, and we will have CIF sports.
And you'll be playing those at your facility, home games presumably at your facility?
Yes, our facility, we also have our other facility that we currently house the sports.
And you have sufficient parking to host that at your facility?
Yes.
Okay. I was curious, following up on the chair's question about your reaching out to Newport Mesa, because I was curious also about the nature and what their response was. And when you said they didn't get back to you, I kind of scratched my head about that. Because it would seem to me, if I were you, it'd be really important to have them get back to me, almost to the point where I'd call them up and go, hey, did you guys get my letter? Oh, you did? Okay, we just wanted to make sure. Because I didn't hear back from you, and you're a big school district, you've got an awful lot of employees. I'm sure you have an opinion on what it is that we're doing. Whether you like it or not, either way, we'd love to hear from you. What was your thought process when you never heard back from the Newport Mesa Unified School District?
It was unfortunate. We actually had heard back from some of the other school districts, so we...
It's clearly unfortunate. What was your thought process about that lack of response? Did you think of doing anything? Or it's like, well, we're really not going to interact with them, so we don't care if they interact with us?
To be honest, we wanted to work with them, and I don't know. I can't really say any more about that.
Okay, and then my last thing is not so much a question, well, it's a question. Have you seen the connection to the Santa Ana River Bike Trail? From the trail that basically is parallel to the freeway? That T-intersection, have you physically seen it?
I have not.
Okay, let me just suggest to you this. It is a very dangerous intersection. And if you're going to be trying to encourage students, and I kind of know how kids are, at least I kind of know how some of my kids were, but I ride that trail all the time, and I know how adults are at that intersection. And if you're going to put a lot more people at that intersection, I'm telling you it's dangerous. Not only do the people entering from that, but the people that are already in transit on the trail. So I would recommend that you and your school look at that intersection, think about that, and come up with a way to ensure that the students who bike at that location use appropriate safety measures, like coming to a complete stop.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Felch, for bearing with us in our many questions. I think some of my colleagues up here are mentioning the list of high schools in the district. Newport, Newport Harbor, Costa Mesa, and Estancia. Forget that there's a fourth school called Early College High School, which I attended. Class size, my graduating class of 2014 was 53 students. And the school had, at any point in time, anywhere between 200 to 250 students. Class sizes were about the size of what you're proposing, 20 to 25. And we also had a focus on the interdisciplinary projects. And the school recently, I was talking to the high school principal there, got a kind of a disengagement. I don't remember which one it was, but I think it was one of these ones that I think very few cities or schools in the state of California have. So how does your program differentiate from that program? Which, I mean, I attended that school, and pretty much everything that you're saying is what my experience there was. So how are you going to provide something different?
Absolutely. So, I'm glad that your experience was great there, and I'm sure it's a wonderful school. And again, I'm not trying to say, put down any school or say that we're better or anything like that. Again, we want to be a public school option for families with a slightly different model. I don't know that school intimately. However, the fact that we have, again, it's hard to explain the learning spaces because they're not necessarily classrooms and that type of approach. I know that's different. The fact that we are a partner with the International Studies Schools Network provide a wide range of opportunities as such through that network. And again, I know that that is something that is different from that school. And, I was trying to think of the last thing, and it slipped my mind, I'm sorry. It'll come back to me. But, oh, yes, sorry. We also have, in addition to dual enrollment, we are an early college high school. We also have career technical education pathways. And I really haven't touched on that too much. Our pathways really focus on helping students get industry certifications in areas such as biotechnology, cybersecurity, and international business. And so again, those are areas that, while we do provide dual enrollment, it is also focused in some of those areas that not only are they getting dual credit, but also can really pursue industry-level certifications upon graduation. So if they do not want to go directly to college, they can get a well-paying job straight out of high school.
So regarding the industry-level training, are you then proposing to have labs or workstations at your school?
Great question. So because it is done in partnership with the local community colleges, those labs are done at the college campuses.
So your school wouldn't have any things like chemistry labs with gas and that sort of thing?
No.
Oh. Okay. Regarding your bike-to-school program you've mentioned a couple times, I think Commissioner Zick brought up a very interesting point regarding the safety. But assuming that there were no issues with the connection to the Santa Ana River Trail, how many students do you foresee taking part in your bike-to-school program?
Yeah, so, to your early, I want to touch on your earlier question. They are double-sided, the bike racks. We're projecting probably between 10% to 15% of our students taking advantage of the bike-to-school program. So that's what we think in terms of numbers.
Right, and so then how many bike racks would you be providing? Or how many bike, spaces for bike parking would you be providing onsite? Because that's 15 times 5 is quite a lot of bikes that you would potentially be bringing to your school. So would you have space for them all?
Absolutely, yeah. And we will provide as many bike racks that are needed. The initial proposal was based on what we think we'll be starting with. And then, as there is more of a need, we don't want to have unnecessary bike racks there, but as there is more of a need, we will make sure that the bike racks are there.
Because I'm just doing quick math, about 75, so that's quite a lot of bike racks. With what you're proposing now, I think would only be about 18. Let's see, as for my other questions, do you foresee having any special training for your staff that would be responsible for traffic management of the parking areas?
So all of our staff undergo safety training as part of their annual mandated trainings. So we can definitely make sure that we have our supervision staff adequately trained. We have all of our bus drivers and van drivers trained as well. And so we do go through annual trainings with them.
And so what institution or organization do your staff receive traffic safety training from?
Yeah, so it's through our insurance company, A-Skip, that we receive our annual trainings.
Okay. All right, so your student enrollment would be about 500, wouldn't it?
Yes.
500. And you're foreseeing 40% of those using your buses and vans?
Correct.
So I think if I do the quick math here, that means, what, about 300 students would not be using your transportation?
That is correct.
Do you really foresee your parking area and the street being able to handle about 300 vehicles all showing up at around the same time? Because you did say that there is an hour-and-a-half window of when drop-ups could be made. But if most parents, like yourself, are working parents and would be dropping off their kids as early as possible, wouldn't that suggest then that you'd have about 300 vehicles all showing up at around the same time?
Not necessarily, because parents have a wide variety of schedules. So a parent like me might drop their kid off at 7:00, 7:15 a.m. A parent next door might drop their kid off at 7:45 or 8 o'clock. And so it's a wide range. And based on our current school that operates, again, a little over 800, 850 students, we have the same drop-off and pickup structure. And again, we rarely have more than 10 cars queued at any one time. And that would leave plenty of room for queuing in this current facility.
10 cars queued on or offsite?
Onsite.
Onsite?
Yeah.
And is there any reason you didn't explore the, sort of a similar drop-off model that we saw from the Renaissance School International last year in which student, that student drop-offs were blocked off per grade level and, say, in 30-minute intervals to kind of help with the traffic flow?
Well, and from the perspective of a parent, if I have a 9th grader and an 11th grader, I want to bring my two students at the same time.
Well, and you could, I mean, that model could allow for siblings, for example, to be dropped off simultaneously.
And the fact that it also, again, we have an hour-and-a-half in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. That is more than enough time to pick up and drop off. And many times during those periods, there might only be one or two cars. And so really, when I say 10 cars queued, that's the busiest time. I have, I actually was the one that started our school in Santa Ana and created this pickup and drop-off queuing with just under 900 students. And that's why I can confidently say, because I was the one that really facilitated that, that we have efficient operations. That's also very important. When a parent is dropping their kid off, we are right there, opening the door, welcoming with a smile. But the time that the door opens to the time that the door shuts, 15 seconds.
Sure.
So again, we do get in and out, but we also try to provide a nice touch on that.
Okay, that works. And one very quick final question. Would you have a separate loading and drop-off area for the buses compared to for the vehicles? Because otherwise, I mean, I would imagine you'd have buses blocking the vehicles.
Yeah, so I don't have the, in front of me, but it is in the same general vicinity, but there is a longer space along the back that the buses can drop off.
So the buses will be able to pull up and drop off students while
Correct.
private vehicles went by?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it, and thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vavar. And thank you for your transportation-related questions. It's always a joy to have a transportation engineer, yeah, and expert, among other engineers on this board as well. I'll jump in real quick, just with a couple additional questions that came to mind. Starting with, have you received any federal recognition or awards in terms of blue ribbon for your schools?
No, we have not. This school is also very new, only its second year of existence, so.
Okay, well, I know that back, what's kind of exciting is back in May where Commissioner Vavar went to high school, they just received the blue ribbon this year, so it was very outstanding. Secondly, what do you know about the nonprofits in this community that do after-school programming for youth?
Well, we, I could probably toss it over to my colleagues that work closer with the after-school programs. We have worked with a few after-school programs and contracted with programs such as Think Together to provide after-school program services. But there's a number of community organizations that provide amazing services. Yeah.
Do you have a plan to serve some of the underserved communities here, like in Westside, Costa Mesa? And if so, what's the plan?
That is actually really who we serve. So our, historically, we have served anywhere from 90% to 95% of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. So historically, that's usually the students who we do serve.
Okay, all right. Colleagues, Commissioner Zick?
Quick question I forgot to ask you before. In your materials, you indicate that there will be no state funds used for the construction or renovation of the facility. So what's the source of the funds for all that work?
Well, I could probably toss it over to, I know Rich, you were talking about that, yeah.
Public funding in California is always interesting. So when we say there's no state funding, as a school district, the state pays for your buildings. As a charter school, the state offers no money to public facilities for charter schools. So public charter schools have to take that money out of their general apportionment. So it's just part of their state funding that's coming through that's per pupil funding. There's no separate line of funding that's coming from the state specifically for facilities. For districts, there is. So that's a very key distinction. That's why we're looking at facilities like this. These are few and far between for charter schools. To find such a good facility like this is very difficult.
So the money does come from the state?
Yes, but it is very important to understand, when you say state funding for facilities, that is a very technical term of art that's used up in Sacramento to mean through the state office of public construction.
I didn't write the statement here. The distinction that you're making, which may be important, is not communicated to me in this document.
Gotcha, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. And while I have you, Richard, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I'm usually a first-name kind of guy. Hansberger, okay, let me write that down. Mr. Hansberger. ESQ. Mr. Hansberger, thank you. So I want to understand the funding a little bit more, right on the heels of Commissioner Zick's question.
Sure.
So is there any possibility that individual students and/or their families will invoice Newport Mesa Unified to pay for your school?
No.
No.
Categorically, no.
Categorically, okay.
Yeah, I've never even heard of that suggestion, to be honest with you. No, that wouldn't even be a possibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's my only question. Anyone else?
My pleasure.
Quick question, I don't know if it falls on the end of your purview, but you heard earlier that currently the, because our priority here is land use, and we designated this area as a green zone.
Right.
Basically dispensaries or manufacturing facilities. So how do you feel your constituency is going to feel about having their students right next to a dispensary?
You'd have to ask them. I mean, honestly.
Come again?
I think you'd have to ask them. I don't think people would be thrilled about it. I can tell you, years ago, I had a charter school that was located in a commercial facility and a hookah bar opened up next door. Oh, and we heard about it, for sure. The hookah bar didn't last long, the community was not happy about that. So I would imagine, if, I don't know your laws around cannabis, it's not my area of expertise.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I meant like the parents that you serve.
Right, so I would imagine the parents would probably not be happy about that. My understanding is retail use is not permitted in this green zone that you call it. So I don't know what the distinction is between retail use and what would be allowed in that area. Would it be something that the parents see? I don't know. I think we'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah, so you're not familiar with the kind of
Not my area.
Marijuana dispensaries that are manufacturing.
I don't practice marijuana law, not my area.
So I'm just, again, as a parent that will eventually pursue, you know, has my eyes out for good high schools. I mean, it seemed a little concerning that you're not aware that there's some businesses of not ideal consumption for our high school students and exploding them.
I think the, I think the charter, I think this charter public school is very well aware. And I can tell you that, I mean, I've been to thousands of school district meetings where parents are upset about one thing or another that occurs in the community that doesn't make them happy. I mean, that's how school districts function. That's how they should function. So I would imagine if parents were upset about that, that they would hear about it for sure.
And I do want to mention, we are aware that we are in a green zone, and we're a closed campus. We want to make sure that our students are inside the building, and for a number of reasons, not venturing out.
Yeah, awesome, awesome. So a couple of questions. So you mentioned that there's already school enrollment until 11th grade. So that's already almost close to the 500, 300 and change, right? Of the 500 capacity of students that would, will be at this high school.
Yeah, it's currently, it's currently closer to 200. And that's mainly because of our current facility limits. So we're at, we're at currently about 200 students.
I see, in the report, it says 125 students per grade level, and you said 9 to 11?
Yes.
My math not.
But, no, and so we aren't able yet to have 125 students because we are limited by our current building capacity, the temporary building that we're in now.
And so, okay, and so then, so there's currently 200, and so there's about 300 spots for potential Costa Mesa students. And so, again, I'm a little unfamiliar with the Costa charter school process, on how does one apply and whatnot. So what would be the enrollment opportunities, again, to serve Costa Mesa students?
Sorry, could you?
How does a parent get their kid to enroll?
Okay, yeah.
Was it application, I've heard of lotteries, I mean, what's it all look like? Or is it a transfer, easy transfer?
I'll give you an easy example. So right, starting November, this past November 1st, we opened up our open enrollment period, for example. Let's say that you are an eighth, a current 8th grade parent looking for a 9th grade high school option. So you could apply during our open enrollment period to our lottery application. That open enrollment period ends right after Martin Luther King Weekend in January. After that, we will hold a public lottery for any excess spaces. If we, if our applications exceed our enrollment capacity and in any one grade level, then we would hold a lottery application at that point. Once the lottery application has been completed, if there is any more space, a parent could just fill out an enrollment form and enroll their student if there is space available. If there is not space available, then this, then you could apply and to be on a waitlist.
So existing students in the Meridian program kind of get like a first dibs?
Well, yeah, it's the same school, so yeah, they would stand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Before we go to you, Commissioner Rojas, I see Director Lee has her mic on, so it's got to be a good one. So let's go to her.
Thank you, Chair, appreciate it. This is really for the commission as you move into deliberations after public comment. It's important that your deliberations and whatever motion that you put forward focus on the CUP findings that are before you. There are three CUP findings that this commission would need to make in order to approve the project, generally having to do with compatibility and impacts to the surrounding properties and uses, as well as consistency with the city's general plan. So just wanted to make that note before you move into deliberations. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Director Lee. All right, Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, so just a couple of quick questions. And I understand that this is a land-use item, you know, but you mentioned being good neighbors. We too want to be good neighbors and understand what we're being asked to approve and not approve and allow one to the city of Costa Mesa, which is a faith along the lines of what my line of questioning is. So, and it's very simple. I mean, you mentioned reaching out to the NMUSD director and not having a heard back. Would you be open to pursuing that conversation out of good faith to try to establish that contact with him?
100%, 100%.
Okay, just, that's for public record. I want to make sure that goes on the record in front of all people present. I know a question was asked earlier, serving a specific need or target population. I'm glad you went over it. I had it in my notes, international business, biotechnology, cybersecurity, and climate change leadership. So I know you missed that fourth one, so I figured I'd throw that in there for you. But my other question is, what other sites do you currently have? I know you mentioned you have several ones. Can you let us know where those are?
Absolutely.
And I'm assuming, obviously, if you have more than one, that they're working and you've got, figured it out. But I'd like for us to know where they are and how those are running at this time.
Sure, sure, yeah. So I've mentioned the location in Santa Ana. So that is currently serving our elementary all the way through 11th grade. So we have an elementary school, a middle school, and then temporarily, we're housing our high school there. That's why there's not a whole lot of space to, for enrollment there. We also have a school, Palm Lane Global Academy, that is in Anaheim. Do you want the exact location?
No, no, no.
Okay, so we have the school in Anaheim. We also have two schools in Los Angeles. We have Vista Charter Middle School and Vista Horizon Global Academy, an elementary school in Los Angeles.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Anyone else? Yeah, Commissioner Andrade.
I just, I guess maybe this is more of a procedural, but we just got a notification in our inbox of a letter.
Yeah.
Are we gonna?
Maybe, maybe we hold off on that, if that's okay.
Okay.
Just for now. Is that okay? All right, Vice Chair.
Yeah, just one quick question, changing gears real fast. Most of Costa Mesa is to the south of this property, but if we could pull up the map, I think it's on slide two. It seems like the circulation plan, the queuing plan and everything depends on everybody coming from the north. So I was just curious, how, if, is this just a matter of communication with the parents? Like, please, please do a big loop around and come off MacArthur? Is that, that's the plan?
Yeah, we are going to clearly communicate with our parents where we want them to enter from, and it is from MacArthur through Highland.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? We'll always have a second bite. Okay, all right, thank you, Doctor, I appreciate it. Before we move on to public comments, just only because it's been about two hours, let's take a 10-minute break, stretch our legs. I'm going to check on Willie Nelson to see how he's doing. And, yeah, we'll see you in 10 minutes, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Just went really quiet all this. All right. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, November 27, 2023. I'll call the meeting back into order and I will now open up for public comments on item number one. If you'd like to speak to this item, you're welcome to come to either podium. You have three minutes to speak and at the one minute mark, you hear a little chime and then the microphone will cut off. It's not me cutting you off, just know that. And then we'll move on to Zoom and telephone as well, and we'll deal with that when we get there. So we'll start with Mr. Heathcock. Mr. Heathcock, welcome.
Good evening, and I will hopefully not take up the three minutes because I have a tendency to speak fast. So anytime you can ask me to slow down or repeat. Good evening, Chair Erath and members of the Planning Commission, Commissioners. My name is David Heathcock, President/CEO of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce. I came in here to speak in support of Vista Meridian Global Academy's application, particularly the land use that we're here for tonight. And I have to admit, I did not know a lot about charter schools when I first engaged many, many months ago with the folks with Vista Meridian. But I did spend some time going through the California Department of Education's website and got to learn a little bit more about, you know, what are they about and nonprofit, for profit, and all those kinds of questions and kind of how's it, how's it relates to Costa Mesa and is it a benefit that it brings to our, to our community. And a part of that, one of the things I thought was interesting is listening to or reading about the state mandates for applying for a state for a charter school. And if I also read it correctly too, they're mandated to reach out to the school district. And I could be wrong on that, but I will mention that in part of my discovery, I did uncover that. But to get back to the mandates, which I felt correlated with the mission and goals of Vista Meridian. One was improved student learning. The other, increased learning opportunities for all students with a special emphasis on expanded learning experiences for students who identified as academically low achieving, encourage the use of different innovative teaching methods, provide parents and students with expanded choices in the types of educational opportunities that are available within the public school system, hold accountable for meeting measurable student outcomes, and have highly credentialed teachers in all core subjects. And I speak about that, you know, I'm part of the Newport Mesa School District. I went to Montavista Elementary, which became shut down and became Back Bay High School. Went to Christ Lutheran, smaller class size, really excelled at that. And then as with Chair Erath, I was a proud graduate of Newport Harbor High School. Go Tars. But part of that, you know, when I see that, with the approach that Vista Meridian has on providing the comprehensive curriculum, it addresses the educational needs of, of the kids within Costa Mesa. Like with any organization coming to choose to locate within Costa Mesa, we are grateful for their willingness to deploy their limited financial resources here in our city. And with that, I, Erath, the Planning Commission approved Mr. Merian's application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heathcock. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trent Spire. I have the privilege of being the Principal of Vista Meridian Global Academy. First of all, we are very grateful for the opportunity to share our vision with you. We truly believe that we have amazing experience to offer Costa Mesa students and can provide a transformational education option to the Costa Mesa community. Our gratitude to pursue the opportunity to provide an amazing education experience at the Sunflower location is due in large part to the Costa Mesa community. Everyone we have had the pleasure of interacting with has been so welcoming and is eager to hear about our progress. Our neighbors, the business partners at SOCO and the OC Mix, have expressed their excitement to us about our interest to move in across the street and many businesses have offered to host staff meetings and parent functions. We have also enjoyed participating in SOCO's community events where we were able to meet local families, many of whom were excited to hear about our programs. We've also thoroughly enjoyed being active members of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce. So many of the chamber members consistently approach us eager to create partnerships that will enhance the school experience for our students, families and staff. Personally, I've been amazed by the commitment of the chamber members to serve their community. This commitment is shared by Vista Meridian and we are excited to continue and strengthen our partnership with the chamber. While our relationship with the Costa Mesa community is in its beginning stages, it has already produced amazing partnerships that we are confident will continue to grow. We have appeared in the Mesa Verde Living and East Side Living magazines, introducing ourselves to residents of the local neighborhoods. A neighboring religious organization, St. Barnabas Orthodox Church, has extended their welcome to us and has already graciously offered their grounds to us as an emergency evacuation site. We cannot wait to continue to cultivate these relationships in the Costa Mesa community and use community partnerships to further strengthen our goal of providing a transformational education experience to our students. We believe that's the experience that all students deserve and we are eager to offer that experience to the Costa Mesa community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spire. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board. Thank you. My name is Jasmine Aguilera and I am a parent to three students currently attending Vista Global Academies and I am in favor of, sorry, and I am in favor of the, I got nervous, of the item presented today before the Board. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Aguilera. Yes?
Hi, I'm Pamela Seraphin. I am a junior at Vista Meridian Global Academy. The reason why I think the school is like a good school is because like the counselors, the teachers, they'll give you like full attention whenever you need it. They give you a second chance if you make a mistake on like work. And the reason why I think like it would be very big to move to Newport or Costa Mesa is because like we need a lot of more space to like expand our community and bring more other students that will need like that extra help that they're not getting from district schools such as like Newport, Costa Mesa schools. They could come here, maybe try, try it out, take a chance on Vista Meridian Global Academy and see if they will like to stay. They could go if they want, but personally, I've been here since sixth grade. I love it. I never had a thought, a thought of like moving away from the school because they just generally care and help me with my education. And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Seraphin. Yes?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Brietta Williams. I'm an employee at Vista Meridian and I really enjoy working from there. They are a great school and I'm, I grew up in Costa Mesa, right down the street actually from where the school's going to be moving in. And I'm very excited that they're going to be moving into, you know, my hometown where I grew up. And I can tell that the students are very excited as well. They've been very eager for their own building and their own space, you know, to get away from the little kids, as they say. So they, they've really been looking forward to just having their own high school building and space to have that high school experience. So I am in support of Vista Meridian's proposal and thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Executive Director Capellini.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mary Capellini. Yes, I am the Executive Director of Save Our Youth, which is a nonprofit on the west side of Costa Mesa that serves 400 high school and junior high students from Newport Mesa. They go to early college, our Blue Ribbon also go to Newport Harbor High School. Most of the students live on the west side. I'm here to talk against this, and I would hope that tonight in the Planning Commission, because of so many of the issues that you have raised, that you would also vote against it. Because of these five questions that I have, first of all, I just kind of found out about it today. I was looking at the agenda. Sometimes I go through, I was writing, looking for something on the website today, and found this this evening. So why this charter school? Why are we here at a City Planning Commission for the first time, thinking and hearing about it, instead of at a school district meeting? Number two, why do we need a charter school when we have five incredible high schools with lots of options, including early college, which is even smaller than the school that's proposed here tonight? And three, why would we want to take away taxpayer money for basically a private school under the guise of a charter school when our public schools need the funding? And why have our students, why have our students in Newport Mesa not heard anything about this school or the options to even apply to the school? And then I guess the last one would be because you are looking at the, the use option, is does this fit our general plan? You know, the next part of the agenda is the green, green item. This is a green space that you're doing. If, if anything, wouldn't we need more housing? Isn't that a big part of what we need also in Costa Mesa, especially on that zone area? So I think that, based on those questions, there's a few things I'd like to really discuss. You know, Vista came to the school district, and it was denied before the charter that they had applied for, for K-6. And so they went to the county and got it approved through the county. As far as we know, they have not done any outreach to any of the schools in the west side of Costa Mesa. We heard him talk about being in the Mesa Verde and East Side newspapers. That's awesome. But guess what? Most of the students that are 90 to 95% of low income live on the west side of Costa Mesa. I left at 5:30 this afternoon. I left five UCI students that were tutoring our high school students in, at SOE. As they were applying for college, their college applications, we have students that have, need more assistance on that west side, and I haven't seen any outreach for them at all. I taught in San Ana Unified for many years. It's an amazing district, but these students all are in San Ana Unified, and they're coming to our, our city, which is great, but we need the people on the west side, those kids, if these are the students that they want to serve, to be able to have that same access. Thank you for...
All right. Thank you, Director Capellini. Superintendent Trader, how are you?
And we appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns regarding this. It is true, Newport Mesa is a community-funded district, and I assure you, the charter will invoice the district for almost $6 million for both resident and, and non-resident attendance. In addition, the district, it is concerned about this. We object to any action authorizing this. The district did have dialogue with this charter when they were being approved by the Orange County Department of Ed. This is governed by the Charter School Act, and it precludes Vista Meridian from locating at the proposed site. You know, the act is very specific about where a charter may locate and specifies that no countywide charter may locate in a district that was not notified of the charter school's intention to locate in the district's boundaries, nor may it locate in any location that is not identified in the approved charter document. And the charter document does not include a location on Sunflower Avenue, nor any other site within NMUSD boundaries. And moreover, Vista Meridian did not provide notice to NMUSD of the intent to locate in the district. Contrary to that, Vista Meridian expressed, expressly informed the district that it would not locate in the district's boundaries. And secondly, we'd like to, and, and that conversation is documented in the Orange County Department of Education's comments that we made to them when they were approved for a countywide charter. And then we'd also like to, concerned about CEQA, you know, the key consideration to determining whether there's, this is an exemption should be applied, is that, that the proposed project involves, quote, negligible to no expansion of use. The district feels that this would be a new use and would be potentially a potential significant expansion of the use. And so with that, then, we ask the Commission to deny approval of the notice of exemption and instead direct staff to fully address the environmental impacts of this proposed project in compliance with CEQA. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Trader. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to speak to this item? Right, scene on Anna. Do we have anyone online or on the phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead and, excuse me, close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Andrade.
I think I would, you know, now, receiving this letter that we got in the mail from the school district explicitly saying that they did not hear, well, it was stated that they did reach out, and I think one of our public commenters made a really great point. You know, this, this is a land use conversation, and because this is directly impacting education, it just seems a little backwards to start here as opposed to the curricula and how this is going to impact students. And, and if we're truly interested in showing our students and modeling to our students, what are the proper lines of doing business? You don't start backwards, right? You start with the stakeholders that are going to be impacted in the area. So, so I guess I just don't, I don't really understand the process on why, why start here and why not go with the appropriate body that you're, you will ultimately have to collaborate with during, during the duration of your existence. And it sounds like direct funding. So, and it sounds, you know, and we're, now we're hearing two versions on how it is, or not going to be funded from both parties. So it just seems a little convoluted.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Mr. Hansberger, would you mind coming up for a sec? I just had a quick question for you. Or anyone on the team, that's totally fine. Have you had a chance to read this letter from the school district that was circulated during the, shortly after the break?
I have not, outside of looking at it for five seconds.
Okay. All right. Has anyone else on your team developed an opinion on some of the educational statutes that are proposed here by Newport Mesa Unified?
Richard.
So I'm not going to give you one. I've read the letter, and that's all I'm going to say at this point.
All right. So you've read the letter. Thank you.
Chair, for the record, I just wanted to articulate for the record that the communication that was handed to the Commission was received via email during the, during this meeting. We provided copies to the Commission. We also have provided a copy to the applicant, and we have copies available for any members of the public who would like to see it as well. And it'll be posted online tomorrow morning per our procedures. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Lee. Colleagues, Commissioner Rojas.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo Commissioner Andrade's comments here because, you know, we've heard different things, and I understand this is a land use item. I get that. I'm not trying to deviate from that. But obviously, there's conversations that haven't been completed yet behind doors, or not even behind closed doors, and amongst people that should be communicating with each other that still haven't been done. And I, I'm just not 100% comfortable making a decision on something that is, we're trying to isolate something when there's other things that still need to be addressed, because it's very confusing, to be honest with you, sitting here trying to make sure that we're making the right decision. But it's, it, it hasn't been, conversations that need to have been done and completed in transparency that needs to have been done, it feels like it hasn't been completed yet. And so we're being asked to vote on something that hasn't been pursued to its full extent. I mean, I'm reading this letter, and I'm, I'm hearing things of we're not supposed to be doing these things, we're not, and I'm hearing also the $6 million that are going to be invoiced, which we were just specifically asked that weren't going to be invoiced. We're talking about CUPs and CEQA and these kind of things. And I'm like, guys, we're, we're not there yet. So I'm just going to say that I think there's still conversations that need to have been had that haven't been had yet, and that's, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that this panel is the one that should be making that decision at this point.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Before we get to you, Commissioner Zick, I'd love to hear your, your thoughts. Let's turn it over to Mr. Preziosi to see if there, if our lawyers have any legal opinions on the letter that was circulated during the break. Mr. Preziosi.
Thank you, Chair Erath. So I briefly looked at the letter. The Planning Commission's duty here tonight is to approve the project within the confines of the Costa Mesa zoning code, and whether or not it meets the conditions of the zoning code as stated. If the school is ultimately able to open or not open, based on its relationship with the school district and the county, that's a separate issue. As conditioned, and those conditions could be modified in the direction of the Planning Commission, the applicant is required to follow all state and local laws, which would include provisions of the education code. So if it is in fact true, I'm not opining one way or the other, if it is or is not, if it were in fact true that they would need this approval by the school district or the notification of the school district, that would be a legal preconditioning to them opening. But that's not necessarily something the Planning Commission needs to concern itself with when it comes to whether or not they meet land use approvals as contained in the zoning code.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Preziosi. I'm looking at conditions of approval, Exhibit B, number 14, and I'll read it for the public and my colleagues. "The project is subject to compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws. Copy of the applicable Costa Mesa municipal code requirements has been forwarded to the applicant, and where applicable, the authorized agent for reference." So if I could just rephrase, or I guess, make an opinion on this, and you're welcome to correct me, Mr. Preziosi, "As a precondition for approving this project potentially, they would have to comply with all of, all of the, the local and state laws." Is that correct? "Including but not limited to any forms of communication with the local school district, if applicable."
Correct. Those would be conditions imposed on the project if approved by the Planning Commission that they'd be required to meet before the school site could be developed.
Okay. And I, I don't know if this is too much of a stretch, and you're welcome to tell me to not ask it afterwards if you want. But let's say, for example, that the, the local school district takes a, a position that's different than theoretically one that we would. What would we do then?
Chair Erath, are you proposing that if the Planning Commission were to approve this, but the school district ultimately did not approve this, that would be between the school district and the applicant?
Yeah, or vice versa. If we were to, you know, if we were to approve it, school district denies it. If we were to deny it, school district approves it. Would we somehow catch ourselves in a situation where, I don't, I don't know where we would be, to be quite honest?
So my recommendation, if the Planning Commission is going to consider approving it or denying it, should be based on the four corners of the zoning code and the requirement, as well as the general plan and the required findings to approve a conditional, condition of approval, required findings to approve a conditional use permit, nothing beyond that. Whether or not, if they, if they are denied, it should be based on those factors. If it's approved, it should be based on those factors. The issue of whether or not they can ultimately open it, the school, is between, an issue between them, the education code, and the school district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Preziosi. I appreciate that. Colleagues, any, Commissioner Zick?
Since the public hearing is still open, I just wanted to say I don't have any questions for the applicant. I don't have any questions for staff. And at such point as a discussion of motions is appropriate, then I'm ready to do that, and I will opine at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade. And I just want to remind my colleagues that we're going to be moving on to applicant comments and any further questions for staff after this before we close the public hearing. So Commissioner Andrade.
Just maybe for the staff portion, to comment on the school district's comments on the CEQA, on CEQA.
Okay. All right. Director Dropkin, additional CEQA findings?
I can tell you that we've reviewed, I've quickly reviewed the letter. It, it does address concerns with the exemption. Generally, I, I didn't have time to really focus on it. I can tell you, I'm, the staff is very comfortable with the exemption that was being proposed in the report. With that said, staff could look into the concerns that the school district has at a later time. But currently, the report stands in good review of a CEQA exemption. We've used that exemption in many occasions with different schools. There are other aspects of CEQA exemptions that we could stand on with regards to the proposal. None effectively create any environmental impacts. I might, might, might say, the, the one issue that I would want to make sure of, that the Commission is well aware of, is that CEQA law requires a environmental issue to be dependent on the project effect on the environment and not the environmental effect on the project. So basically, what that means is a lot of the, a lot of the, briefly, when I was reviewing that letter, it seemed like that might have been part of that. But again, it, I looked at very peripherally, so I can't say. But if, if it's, if it's based on that, CEQA law doesn't, it doesn't cooperate with that.
Okay. Thank you, Director Dropkin. Colleagues, let's go ahead and move things along to, any further questions for the applicant? Does anyone have any further questions for the applicant? No? No? Okay. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Hi, and thank you for the deliberation. Joseph, again, yes, we have comments, of course. It's been a good dialogue, and I think, back to what Colin, Dr. Felch, had mentioned with this project. I want to cover a few of the, the points that were raised. I did also quickly read the letter. Thank you for providing that. With respect to the CEQA components, I want to reiterate, staff, what, what the director had indicated with respect to use of the exemption. It is no expansion of use. The site has 51 staff, adult staff. The existing facility is an office building. I believe over 200 adults work there. The site has plenty of parking. Parking is no longer a CEQA topic, as you're well aware. The project was screened out for VMT because of its use. The project is consistent with the industrial park land use designation, and your general plan states that institutional uses may also be appropriate, provided the land use compatibility and traffic issues have been addressed, subject to a discretionary approval process. So we're here tonight. Project is adequately, adequate in size. It's just over two acres. We are not expanding the building footprint or physical changes in that regard. It's in an urban area. It is adequately served by all required utilities and public services. It's consistent with your applicable zoning regulations. A school is a conditionally allowed use within the zone. The project site and adjacent areas, they have no value for habitat. There's no endangered, rare, or threatened species in or approximate to the site, as well as the project will not have significant environmental impacts related to traffic. Again, traffic is no longer CEQA topic, noise, air quality, or water quality. The project is within the existing confines of the building. So with that, I believe, Dr. Felch, you wanted to share as well?
Yes, and I do want to touch on some of the, the questions related to the district that, and, and here. Vista Meridian is a countywide charter that has been approved and received all the necessary approvals from the Orange County Department approvals from the Orange County Department of Education, and therefore does not require any approval from the Newport Mesa Unified School District. Now, with that, we did, I have the, the email that we sent to the, the district, so I, if needed, I can, I can produce that evidence. With that said, when I am saying that we still would like to collaborate, absolutely. We, we'd be happy to collaborate with the district. That does not mean that we need to go to a board meeting for approval on any items. This, this is the, the body that is, is the only approval that we need to legally be able to operate in, at, at this specific facility in Costa Mesa. We have all of the, all of the education approvals already in place, and that's how we're already operating. And through the Orange County Department of Education, when we did receive that approval, we are authorized to operate within the Newport Mesa Unified School District boundaries.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, just one final comment. I appreciate counsel, what you said about this approval tonight. Condition 14 is an important condition. We are fully in agreement on that condition, compliance with all federal and state laws, and we will do so. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, doctor.
And there is no invoicing of $6 million. I, I don't know where that comes from. I have never experienced that in my educational career. We receive our 100% of our funds from, directly from our state, from the state for pure people funding. We get funded a certain amount for every student that we get based on our average daily attendance. And then we also get federal funding, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. That is how our funding comes from. We, we will not be invoicing the district.
All right. Thank you so much. I will now close the public hearing. And unless we want to have some additional commentary, we can come to a motion. Would anyone like to have a chat amongst us? And I'm, I'm going to honor Commissioner Zick's request earlier about the motion, by the way. Yes, Commissioner Andrade.
Sir, in the, to clarify the procedure for us, is there an opportunity to hear a little further since we have the school district representation here to speak? I don't know if he's still here.
That's a, that's a great question. I'm going to kick it over to staff to, to make that determination. I'll have to open up the public hearing again and then, and then close it again. Director Lee, Mr. Prezioci, you're welcome to chime in. The, the question that Commissioner Andrade had was, are we able to ask a member of the public representing Newport Mesa Unified to have additional discussion on some of the points that were raised earlier?
Chair Erath, it is within the authority, as long as the public hearing is still open, of the planning commission to have that further testimony if the planning commission wishes to hear it.
Okay. Director Lee, do you want to?
I concur with that. I would just suggest that you reopen the public hearing. It was unclear to me if we formally closed it.
All right.
Two minutes behind, I'm sorry.
So Commissioner Andrade, do we want to, we want to go for it?
Um, yeah.
Got your mic on.
I think it would be great just to clarify, because we got a black and white, one is stating one thing, another one is stating another thing. And again, moving forward on something, I mean, we have in other situations, in other applicant situations, when we see this kind of disparity of stakeholders involved. So, you know, if we really want to take a bite out of this, I think it would be worthwhile to hear a response or any commentary from the school district, since you're here.
Okay. You know what? I, I don't think that's unreasonable, so let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. And I'll, I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Trader, if you feel like rebutting or commenting on some of the things that you heard earlier, I think we could give you an, an additional three minutes or, or so to discuss that. Is that okay? Okay. You're welcome to come up if you'd, if you'd like. Mr. Trader.
So thank you for the opportunity. So it's kind of interesting, on the funding issue, it is different when a charter operates in a district that is a community-funded district. So in a, in a district where a charter is operating that's not community-funded, yes, their funding comes from, directly from the state. But when a charter moves into a community-funded district, their only recourse to get funding is from the district that they are in. And that calls for them to invoice the district for both resident and non-resident attendance at that charter school. Now, the district can get partial reimbursement for the non-resident attendance, but that's, we're, we're beholden to the state for that funding. And that's not always assured, and it's a little risky for, for the district. And so if their estimates hold up, 500 students, it could be close to $6 million, five and a half, between five and a half and $6 million that would, the district would fund the charter.
We still have some time on the clock, about a minute and a half. Did you have any further questions, Commissioner Andrade, or anything specifically?
I mean, and again, this is a land use conversation space, but this is the first time where anyone, sounds like, is hearing about this. So do you have any addition, additional comments in comparison to the, the curricula that this school district is bringing us, bringing the local community? In comparison to what already exists in Costa Mesa, do we have enough capacity for the student population that we need and all of that?
Right. So in, in terms of capacity, the district has a, a lot of capacity and also offers a number of CTE programs that are very similar to what the charter would be offering at the same time.
All right. Colleagues, any further questions for Superintendent? All right. Mr. Trader, thank you so much. We appreciate it. I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Can I make a comment?
You know what? I think we're, we're about there for our motion now, but thank you. So I'll now close the public hearing and entertain a motion as well. Commissioner Zick, do you wish to?
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair. Can you just give me one moment to chat with his attorney?
Dr. Dropkin? All good? Okay. Commissioner Zick, do you wish to follow through?
Considering that no one else jumped up to make a motion, I guess I will. My motion isn't based on so much what I've heard, but it's based on my, my view of the findings in the report. What I've heard is this. Vista Meridian has a program that they think quite highly of, that students are happy with, presumably the parents are happy. You're operating in other schools, seem to have a track record of being able to do that and stay in business and stay out of the, the press, so you must be doing a good job. And whether your school is better than the current public schools in Costa Mesa, or worse, has no impact to me, and I think has no bearing on whether you get an approval or not approval. Whether the school district likes what you're doing or not is important, but it's not relevant to my thought process or my decision. Whether you have been forthright with them or not forthright with them is irrelevant when it comes to my consideration of your application as it relates to the findings for a CUP. There's a temptation on my part to make a motion for a continuance, so you can go off and work this with the district and iron out these details and disagreements and all that. But I don't need to make a continuance for you to do that. A natural course of your approval or their recourse against what you're trying to do will take place outside of this, whether we approve it or not. So I'm not going to make a motion for a continuance for you to work that out. I have no doubt there are things that need to be worked out, but I'm not going to make a motion for a continuance to do that. I'm concerned about a couple of things and the couple of findings that we need to meet that I'm not satisfied that you meet.
If I, if I could, Commissioner Zick, I'm sorry. What is your motion? And then?
If somebody else has a motion, go ahead.
All right. Anna, if you could clear the board, please. Motion made by, attempting to be made by Vice Chair Toler. What's your motion, Vice Chair?
Okay, I, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA, per guidelines, section 15301, and approve planning application 2245, subject to the conditions.
All right. Is there a second? Once, twice. That motion fails for lack of a second. So if we can clear the board. I'll go ahead. Commissioner Zick, if you want to jump in and make your motion or just state your motion, we can go that direction if you'd like.
My motion is to deny the application. If there's a second, I'll elaborate.
Okay. I will second for discussion. So you're, you're welcome to elaborate, Commissioner Zick.
The couple of findings that we need to meet that I'm not comfortable are met have to do with the compatibility, number one. When Measure X was passed by the voters, it was passed with a specific intention. And the specific intention was that an area of the city would be identified as the only area in the city where the manufacturing and distribution cannabis products would be allowed, the green zone, or what some people might still refer to as the Measure X zone. I hardly see that there's compatibility between that use, which is restricted to only that area of the city, and an educational facility for minors. I don't see the compatibility. I also see and have some concern about the idea of this traffic pattern queuing for drop off, drop on, involving the two different parking lots, and I understand the, the joint parking agreement there. I'm just not comfortable. I don't believe that that's the way the parking lot is intended to be used, should be used. The question about the bus drop off being at the same time as other people are trying to drive through that area of the parking lot, to, to me, it just does not seem at all to be a, a, a safe use of that area. And I think that's a second finding that I have trouble meeting, and because of that, I have moved to deny the application.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Since I seconded for discussion, I saw Commissioner Andrade jumped in with the official second. So if you wish to speak, Commissioner Andrade, you're welcome.
Yeah, I support Commissioner Zick's motion based on policy LU 1.1. It's not really giving us a mix and a balance of opportunities or services that our community needs.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Vice Chair.
Sure, I, I'll just jump in and say I, I see where you're coming from for the fact that this is in Measure X zone, there's manufacturing of marijuana in here. There's a, there's manufacturing of lots of things. I have no idea what any of those things are, and I don't really care. They're behind closed doors. There's no fumes coming out. It doesn't affect any other operation going on in there. We have several large housing pipeline projects for, within this area in close proximity, and it's evidence that this, this area is changing. And I don't think the city has a very specific vision for it. Yes, we do have the Measure X maps. We've been entertaining applications for housing projects. There's a lot of opportunity in this site, in this area, and it's not really being guided in terms of physical vision and use and what the future is for it. And I, I think that's okay. That's how cities grow. That's how cities develop. In terms of the finding, we've heard lots of back and forth, he said, she said, and like everybody's said so many times, if that was our job, we would need to prepare ourselves to make decisions based on those sorts of things about worth funding and relationship with the school district, those sorts of things. But we're not. We're, our role is to make land use decisions tonight. We have three findings. And impact to surrounding properties, this is going to be a drop off time, a pickup time. They're going to be fairly staggered, and there's going to be a bunch of kids inside the building. Health and safety and general welfare of the public, I don't see how high school kids occupying an office building threatens that at all. And the third finding is compatibility with general plan, but the finding is more specific than that. It's that it is not a use density or intensity that is not in accordance with the general plan designation, which is industrial park. I don't see any red flags here. I don't see any friction between any of these findings. I think the findings that staff has provided us with in the staff report are satisfactory. And I think a 500-person high school occupying this old office building, especially in times where post-COVID, when office buildings are struggling with vacancies, I see, I see no land use issue with this.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Commissioner Vavar?
I've struggled with this one, and I've been mulling it over and over and over. I think a lot of people here have made great points tonight. Commissioner Russell and Toler in the, about the, the, sort of the land use perspective, and as well as Commissioner Zick and his observations of the circulation, parking. I, based on the traffic, circulation of the, the vehicles and the, the fair point that Commissioner Zick made about the parking lot not necessarily being designed for this, for this kind of use, I think, to me, is convincing, because oftentimes when you do have a change of use, you have to have very careful consideration of what those, what your circulation plan will look like. And while I think that a good attempt was made to make this work, I'm And while I think that a good attempt was made to make this work, I'm not entirely convinced of the safety of those going in and out of here in terms of pedestrians and the vehicles and the mixing and buses. So I don't feel comfortable with this. And making a decision for or against has been difficult, but I think I will be backing Commissioner Zick's motion.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Klepak or Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, I'll chime in. I don't personally have concerns about it being in the green zone because it's not retail area, which is where that buffer would be an issue, so I don't see that as being an issue here. I do struggle a little bit with the traffic. I know that there was mention of buses being able to drive concurrently and independently of what the cars are doing, and I don't see that on the drawing. It looks like it's one lane, so the buses would be intermixed with the cars, from what I can tell. So I do have some concerns about the implications. I think that there's been a lot of focus on the site itself, but not necessarily on the surrounding businesses and what it might do to their ingress and egress of having, you know, potentially 300 cars lining up for pickups and drop-offs. So in relation to the concerns that were brought up, I'm not worried about the first one. I'm going back and forth about the second one.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Anyone else? Yeah, Vice Chair.
Sure, I didn't mention the traffic thing to the degree that any of us are still deliberating. I'll say what I think about the traffic. I see this as, I see a lot of our projects that come before us. Let the operator figure that out. Unless it's queuing onto the street and disrupting traffic, well, that's something that we need to enforce. But if the option, I mean, if I could do a little analogy real quick, it's kind of like North Gate Market, which was recently open and was hugely popular, and everybody complained about the parking, even though they loved the place. The place, everybody wants that place to be there. So to those who complain about the parking, what are the options? No North Gate Market or a bigger parking lot? It's the same thing here. Are we really going to say, no, you can't operate a school in here because we think your parking lot's not big enough? Is the parking lot big enough? Are we throwing darts, you know? I feel like this is not our job to be meddling. I mean, sure, working with the planning department, make sure everything's operating smoothly. We have the conditions of approval, but for us to deny a project because we feel like the queuing, their businesses queuing, drop-off, pickup, queuing plan, isn't going to work, just on a feeling like that, I feel is inappropriate.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. I guess it falls to me unless anyone else wants to chime in. It's almost nine o'clock, by the way. Could break this down. I do find that the project is generally compatible in that area. I find that the use per the general plan is generally applicable. I do have ongoing concerns about the traffic queuing and the general circulation and general safety of this site. I don't think that it's been fleshed out. I think as far as health, safety, and general welfare, keeping children inside with no outdoor play is not good. And I don't think I have to be on the school board to say it. If this project does not have an outdoor component where kids can be outside and you're just keeping them inside, I do not find that to be generally healthy. And I'm not saying that just because my PhD is in public health, but because I was also a K-12 student before, who thrived on being outside. So when you talk about having programs that meet or exceed the current standards that we have here in the school district, I find that it fails miserably in that category. So while some claims could be made on the pedagogical side, because like some of you who are educators, I too taught college, and I used progressive pedagogy, flipping the classroom and so forth to get my bona fides. And I just don't find that that use per health is appropriate. So I can find it in some ways to be in line and in others not. And when I weigh it out, I find that this is not an approvable project in its form. So I will be supporting the motion. With that said, Anna, let's call the question.
That motion carries 5-2 with Commissioner Toler and Commissioner Vivar voting no.
All right. Thank you very much, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Thank you. And with that said, let's go ahead and take a five-ten-ish? Five-ish. We're going to take a five-ish. Okay, we'll see you in a minute. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, November 27, 2023. I call the meeting back into order. And Anna, if you'd please read public hearing item number two into the record. But first, we'll move to Commissioner Vivar for pre-comment.
I apologize, staff. Before we continue, I'd like to make, for the record, that I meant to vote yes on the last item and not no. I think I'm just hitting jet lag now. I've just come back from England like two days ago, and I don't think my brain is working straight anymore. So I meant to vote yes on the previous item for the record, so that could be modified.
Okay. Director Drapkin, is that okay? Or should we let the show, River's show in the minutes, if you will?
I think it will show in the minutes.
In the minutes, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar.
Apologize.
And I know you just came back from a wonderful trip. It's okay. You're allowed to be jet. All right, Anna, if we could read the title of public hearing item number two.
Public hearing item number two. Potential ordinance to amend Title 13 Planning, Zoning, and Development of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code and requisite modification required in Title IX Business Licenses for modifications to the city's retail cannabis provisions. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for an expert to take communication.
All right, thank you, Anna. Let's start to my left this time. Commissioner Klepak, any expertise?
Yes, a couple of months ago, I had a phone conversation with somebody who is in the queue with an application. I think I also saw a public comment in here and just kind of heard the concerns about, you know, having been waiting in the queue and whether grandfathering would be a factor. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, Chair, I believe I spoke to the same person, a Mr. Masia or something like that, of 1912 Harbor Boulevard, who did indicate that he has a Measure Q application in the queue. I also spoke to a member of Santa Ana City, the City of Santa Ana staff, a code enforcement principal, about some of the items tonight and regarding her take on what has worked and what has not for the City of Santa Ana. And I have also had conversations with city staff, Mr. Drapkin, about the item tonight and background research and fact-finding data gathering. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Rojas?
Yes, I did. I had a conversation with Mr. Keith Scheinberg, also, I believe, might be the same person you guys spoke with, just talking about he's going to make statements tonight and asking to be grandfathered in any adjustments.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Zick?
He must have been very popular today. I also talked to him, but my reason was I was simply confused between 1912 and 1920, so I called him for clarification on that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade?
Same. Attorney Scheinberg reached out.
Okay, all right, Vice Chair.
I spoke with a Mr. Keith Scheinberg this afternoon on the phone, as well as exchanged an email with him in September.
All right. Shall I make it a perfect record for Keith Scheinberg? I too talked to Keith Scheinberg, but it wasn't per se about this item. It was generally about the state of the cannabis ordinance, not specifically what was earmarked from City Council as far as the asks of us in this particular item. So I'll just make a note of that. All right, and with that said, I will now turn it over to Ms. Halligan to present the item. Ms. Halligan.
Good evening, Chair Erath and the Planning Commission. I'm Michelle Halligan, contract planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The item before you is in response to City Council direction to consider recommending modifications to the city's retail cannabis ordinances. In 2020, Costa Mesa voters approved Measure Q, the Costa Mesa Retail Cannabis Tax and Regulation Measure. In June of 2021, the City Council adopted ordinances to amend Titles IX and XIII of the Municipal Code. In September of this year, the City Council voted to direct the Planning Commission to explore potential amendments to the cannabis ordinances. Pursuant to Zoning Code Section 13-10, one of the Planning Commission's key functions is to recommend City Council approval, conditional approval, or denial of zoning code amendments. The Planning Commission is tasked with deliberating the potential advantages and disadvantages of amendments and ultimately making recommendations on the following topics. Minimum separation between cannabis storefronts. Maximum number of cannabis storefronts citywide. of cannabis storefronts citywide; minimum separation between cannabis storefronts and residential zones; increasing the minimum separation between cannabis storefronts and youth centers from 600 to 1,000 feet; allowing the word cannabis on cannabis storefront signage; advertising restrictions related to youth; strengthening labor peace agreement regulations; and establishing business displacement regulations. The city council directed the planning commission to consider modifications related to four location criteria: A minimum separation between cannabis storefronts; maximum number of cannabis storefronts; minimum separation between storefronts and residential zones; and increasing the minimum separation between storefronts and youth centers. The planning commission can consider recommending a minimum separation requirement and/or a limit on the number of retail cannabis storefronts in the city. Here are examples of six jurisdictions that allow cannabis storefronts. The two most populated and largest geographically have minimum separation requirements of 1,000 feet between cannabis storefronts. Santa Ana and Vista require a minimum separation of 500 feet between storefronts. Palm Springs only requires a minimum separation when outside the cannabis overlay, and the City of Stanton does not have a separation requirement. Some jurisdictions have established a citywide cap, which could be based on a maximum per population, or others by city council district. For example, Vista allows one cannabis storefront per 10,000 residents or a portion thereof. San Diego allows up to four cannabis storefronts per council district for a maximum of 36. A preliminary map being exercised was conducted to demonstrate the existing proximity of open cannabis storefronts. Examples of a 500- and 1,000-foot buffer are shown. Of the nine cannabis storefronts open today, five are located within 500 feet of another storefront. Six are located within 1,000 feet of another storefront. Should the planning commission wish to explore this further, staff could be directed to map a proposed separation and/or prepare a methodology for a cap. As an alternative, the planning commission could recommend a soft cap, such as limiting the total number of applications that could be accepted or processed in a year. The planning commission can also recommend that no amendments are made regarding these two topics. The city council has also directed the planning commission to explore options for establishing a minimum separation between residential zones and cannabis storefronts. Of the six communities surveyed, only San Diego and Stanton had minimum separations from residential zones. San Diego adopted a 100-foot separation, and Stanton adopted a 400-foot separation. Staff looked at a potential 200-foot buffer because 200 feet is an established separation in the municipal code for other compatibility concerns like live entertainment, noise, and alcohol served after 11:00 p.m. An example of that initial mapping exercise is shown on the screen. Residential properties plus 200 feet around them are shown in yellow. Commercial properties that are more than 200 feet from residential zones appear to be hot pink. The light pink color is the commercial properties that are now underneath that yellow residential buffer. Having residential zones directly behind or across the street from commercial zones is a common land use pattern in Costa Mesa. So because of this land use pattern, of the 22 approved storefront CUPs, 16 are located on properties within the example 200-foot buffer. The planning commission could direct staff to explore this buffer option or others in more detail, or to not pursue modification. The city council's direction regarding youth centers was specific to increasing the minimum separation between cannabis storefronts and youth centers from 600 feet to 1,000 feet. This would make the separation equal to other sensitive use buffers in the municipal code. There are five facilities in Costa Mesa that meet our current definition of a youth center, of which one is located within a park with a daycare facility and therefore is already subject to a 1,000-foot buffer. The proposed extension would affect the four other facilities. The draft map demonstrates that the difference between the 600-foot buffer and the 1,000-foot buffer that's shown in purple. Increasing the separation to 1,000 feet would not impact any of the approved CUPs nor the operating storefronts. Staff's initial review shows that this increase would not affect any of our other applications in process. The city council has also directed the planning commission to consider allowing the word cannabis in retail storefront signage. The municipal code specifies that cannabis business signage shall be limited to that needed for identification only. Additionally, all retail cannabis storefronts have been subject to a condition of approval. Limiting business identification signage shall not include any references to cannabis, whether in words or symbols. All signs shall comply with the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. The intention of this condition is to protect youth from cannabis advertising. Similarly, the California Business and Professions Code requires that a licensee not advertise or market cannabis or cannabis products in a manner intended to encourage persons 21 years of age or younger to consume cannabis or cannabis products. Of the communities surveyed, only Long Beach and San Diego have adopted codes that limit cannabis storefront signage to business identification only. In Long Beach, signage is limited to that needed for identification and shall not contain any logos or information that identifies, advertises, or lists the services or the products offered. In San Diego, signs posted on the outside of the cannabis business shall only contain the name of the business in alphabetic characters and shall be limited to two colors. Staff believes the planning commission would have to make the determination that allowing the word cannabis in storefront signage would be for identification only and would not encourage persons under 21 years of age to consume cannabis or cannabis products. If the planning commission can make those determinations, no changes to the city's local cannabis provisions would be necessary. Pursuant to city council direction, the planning commission is also to consider amendments to restrict cannabis marketing and advertising to use beyond the state's regulations. The Business and Professions Code includes regulations specifying that advertising that is broadcasted, such as cable, radio, print, and digital, shall only be displayed where at least 71.6% of the audience is expected to be 21 years or older. Any direct marketing has to utilize a method of age affirmation to verify that the recipient is at least 21. A cannabis licensee shall not advertise in a manner intended to encourage youth to consume cannabis, publish ads or marketing materials that are attractive to children, or advertise a sign within 1,000 feet of a daycare, kindergarten through 12th grade school, playground, or youth center. Here are some examples from other communities. Chula Vista prohibits cannabis marketing using imagery of people under 21. San Bernardino does not allow cannabis advertising on any billboards, bus shelters, placards, or aircraft. Santa Ana and Stanton reworded state law that ads cannot appeal to youth and cannot be misleading. The City of Watsonville prohibits cannabis businesses in the community from advertising in any means other than a website with an age gate portal. The planning commission could recommend leaving the municipal code as is, or they can recommend amendments that are enforceable by the City of Costa Mesa, and staff would include those proposed modifications in a draft ordinance. The city council also expressed concern that some businesses might not be in compliance with labor peace agreement requirements. A labor peace agreement establishes a contract between employees and employer, in which an employee agrees to not engage in a work stoppage and so on, and in return, the employer agrees to not disrupt a labor organization from attempting to organize employees. The Department of Cannabis Control requires licensees with 20 or more employees to enter into an LPA beginning with 20 or more employees. But beginning July 1 of 2024, that requirement will change to apply to licensees with 10 or more employees. The Costa Mesa Municipal Code requires cannabis applicants to provide an LPA that would become into effect once only two employees are hired. Current or former employees can submit complaints regarding LPAs to the Department of Cannabis Control. The DCC is actively communicating with Costa Mesa staff regarding the status of labor organizations. This year, staff received at least one notification of an unverifiable organization. Staff believes that the DCC is the appropriate organization to receive and investigate complaints. If the planning commission agrees, they could recommend leaving the municipal code section as is. Alternatively, staff can be directed to research options for either amendments to the municipal code or to change staff procedures to address this LPA issue. Members of the community have shared their experiences regarding business displacement as a result of the significant market demand for cannabis businesses. Pursuant to city council direction, the planning commission should explore requiring notification and relocation assistance. A review of several cities did not yield examples of regulations requiring cannabis businesses to provide notification or assistance. However, Caltrans has provisions for providing assistance for businesses that have been displaced by infrastructure projects, and cities throughout the state have or are in the process of establishing policies for residential tenant displacement, notification, and assistance. A similar procedure could be crafted for commercial tenants that would be displaced by cannabis storefronts. The amount of staff effort that may be required to manage this process really depends on the proposed program. A potential program could include creating a methodology for notification, the amount of assistance, qualifications for the assistance, how it would be dispersed, and so on. The planning commission could also consider recommending that only noticing be provided, or to not recommend amending the ordinance regarding this topic. Staff recommends that the planning commission provides initial feedback and direction regarding the focus topics. Staff will return to the planning commission at a later date with a draft ordinance that implements their direction and other information as requested by the planning commission. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Halligan. All right. Commissioners, I just want to take a quick second. I know that our first item took a little while. So I'm not sure how everyone's feeling about talking about item number two. I know that this is a topic that we're all very familiar with. So my thought is, and I'm happy to hear your thoughts on procedure, but to work a bit expeditiously through this, maybe going point by point through all eight of these things, doing a soft vote, raised hand, and maybe providing some nuance, if there's nuance within these things. If we need to have breakout conversation, we can have it like, hey, can we add this in, or can we do this, modify it a bit, and then ideally kind of just work through this expeditiously. Does that work for everybody? Because I feel like this is just the first of two bites of the apple. So if we need to really get into stuff, we can do that at a later date. Does anyone have any further thoughts? Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, I kind of wondered how you would recommend attacking this, and I agree with you. And I think the way staff has put their report together, I think is conducive for that, because they basically take each of the issues one at a time. And I like the idea of just kind of a soft vote, so you kind of know where the commission's leaning.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Zick. I think I took inspiration from city council when they did this, but I'm hoping we can beat their time. So, all right. So with that, I'll go ahead and honor, if you guys have any questions of staff. Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, I've got a couple of overarching questions. The first one has to do with the clarification, in my mind, of measurement. And I'm referring to page four with my question, and the very first bullet point. So when we're talking the 600 feet and the 1,000 feet and all these different measurements, you talk about the distance being measured in a straight line from the premises where the cannabis retail is located to the closest property line of a school, playground, daycare, and I know what the playground is, playground equipment and all that. My question is, and I've kind of asked this once before about the cannabis business. So if a building is sitting in the middle of a parcel, and we're going to be measuring from the property line of a K through 12 school to that cannabis business, and this is using the term premises, which is a little bit ambiguous in terms of what are we measuring to? Is it to the property line of the parcel the cannabis business sits on? The closest edge of the building in which the cannabis business is located, even if it's a multi-tenant building? The front door entrance to the cannabis business? Any of those are possible answers? It's not clear to me which one is intended and is explicit in our code.
Commissioner Zick, it's explicit in state law, the definition of a premise, and so that measurement would be the shortest distance between the property line to the actual licensed premise. So that would be the suite. Even in a multi-tenant building, that would be the suite where those cannabis products can be located.
When you say suite, then that would basically mean the edge of the building within which that suite exists. Not, the front door could be on the opposite side of the building, but where that premises is within the building, it'd be that edge of the building where the premises begin inside that building.
It literally refers to the actual location where cannabis products can be allowed. So if the beginning of your building has a suite that is not part of the project, then that is not where your licensed premise begins.
Okay, but if it is, it would.
If it is, it would. That's correct. So in a multi-tenant building, it really depends on where that storefront's going to be located.
I understand. So it's the closest point of the footprint of the cannabis business?
That is correct.
Okay. I mean, I've done lease deals. I understand what premises are. I just want to know which is meant in our code. And I think you've answered that.
Thank you.
Okay. The second question I have, when you were referencing, and we'll probably get into it more in detail, but on page nine, you made a reference when you were talking about the youth centers in the city, and you said there were five in particular, and then you indicate in the paragraph near the bottom that one of them is located within a park and is already subject to the 1,000-foot sensitive use separation. The youth centers have a 600-foot sensitive use separation, not 1,000 feet. And the fact that it's in a playground could trigger a 1,000-foot separation, but that would be from the playground equipment. But this item is specifically talking about the youth center, or 600 feet, not 1,000.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Zick, it should have been more clear. It's not just a playground. There's a community center, a library, there's a lot of facilities all grouped together that have resulted in that 1,000-foot separation.
I'm sorry. What is the sensitive use that is triggering the separation requirement?
And let's see, we've got, it's the Herzog Center, there's a childcare facility that's licensed there.
Okay.
And there's the aquatic center and the daycare.
I got it. So the licensed daycare is what is triggering the 1,000-foot?
I wasn't part of the mapping process, but so when I look at, I just see the outline of the whole property, but I believe it would be the daycare.
Okay. Because in this case, where we're talking specifically about the youth centers, that distance is only 600 feet.
Correct. But because the youth center there, the community center, has a daycare center within it, and there's also all these other child-oriented uses, it's been subject to that 1,000 feet.
Okay. I'm understanding what you're telling me. Okay. And then the, sort of the last question I have, so we got these eight specific items. The council said, yeah, take a look at them. There are some things they didn't say, take a look at. I'll give you an example. One would be the definition of what a youth center is. Community has had a lot of discussion about that. No, it doesn't include a karate studio, et cetera. Are we not Are we not allowed to consider, as an example, the definition of a youth center because the council didn't say, hey, look at that?
The City Council's direction was very specific, and so we would not be tasked with looking at that definition tonight.
Perfect. That's it for my overarching questions.
All right. Those are great questions. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Quick questions for staff? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I had the same question as Commissioner Zick, and I just want to clarify because I don't think I was following as well. When we talk about the difference between whether buffers extend, whether it matters if they cross the property line and don't reach the quote-unquote premise? Is that, that's derived from state law?
Today, our code measures things from the property line to the licensed premise. Moving forward, if you were to create a new buffer zone, that might be something that would be part of that discussion is if you would change the way it's measured. There is some flexibility there.
So the change would be to the property line? But right, I guess what I'm asking right now is, are the buffers measured to the property line or to the premise? All of these buffers?
The buffers today are measured from the property line to the licensed premise, with the exception of playgrounds where there is a little bit of an extra 30 feet around the playground.
Okay, so on page eight of the staff report, we have exhibit two. And maybe I'm misreading this, but it looks like those 200-foot yellow buffers around the residential zones are... Whenever they touch a property, the whole property lights up a different color. That's what I'm trying to...
Sorry, Vice Chair, this is just an example of what we did. We took the residential zones and just added 200 feet beyond them as an example of something we could explore further. So this was not a very technical exercise. Moving forward, though, if a residential buffer is something the Planning Commission wants to explore, we would have to go through a more extensive mapping exercise, especially because we'd be talking about licensed premise.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Vavar?
I'm sorry, can I go to Commissioner Rojas? Because I saw...
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. Man in the penalty box, questions?
That's kind of wanted to continue Commissioner Zick's question. So if we're not allowed to, it's going to sound weird, let me say this correctly. We're not allowed to identify or define what these things are, meaning like youth centers, et cetera. Can we ask the commission to give us permission to do that or ask them to add it on? Or how do we empower ourselves to be able to define that so that we're asking ourselves questions? Is there a process for that?
So I think what the commission would be doing if they had some concerns or issues or suggestions to the council about ordinance modifications that weren't part of the eight, they would recommend in general that the council consider that, but don't put too much, I shouldn't say effort, but too much deliberation into it, other than just to say, staff believes that this has been, or the commission believes that this has been an issue, and we, the council should consider these changes based on our review of these matters or what have you. But from the perspective of getting into the details, our staff's recommendation and the council's direction was clearly to stay with the eight.
Right, right. It is a slippery slope, which I'm trying not to slide down. I just want to make sure.
It is a slippery slope, and I prefer that you don't slide down as well.
Okay, thank you.
Could, just a, sorry, follow up to that. Like, could we use the City of San Diego example where they, the language, so that we don't go into a long list of defining all these types of just saying minor, changing the language to minor-oriented facilities? That way, it's generalized. Or at least pushing it forward as a opportunity for consideration? Because it's within number four, right? It's within the parameters of number four.
Yeah, I think the commission should consider that the council has direction on the eight, and anything beyond that should be very, very minimal. I wouldn't recommend going beyond that with the council direction. I think it could cloud the record to some degree.
Yeah. Director Lee, I saw your mic on, and I know it's important whenever it comes on, so.
I think Mr. Drapkin covered it. I would only add that we do have direction to focus on the eight. So rather than go into detail about what the commission would like to see in terms of the end result, I think if you feel compelled to articulate to the council as part of the record that here are the other topic areas that you would suggest that they look into, I think that's enough. I would stop short of actually telling them what you think they should do on a topic that they haven't requested our opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Zick, thank you, Director Lee. Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, so I would just kind of expand on that whole idea because I accept and agree what Director Drapkin is saying. And the particular reason I agree is because they've done a rather extensive amount of analysis on the eight items. And for us to try to discuss or influence change on other items that haven't been analyzed would be sort of an incomplete thing. But I do have four specific things that I would like to add for council to consider at some point near the end, maybe. If each commissioner is, has an opportunity to sort of wrap up their comments, I'd like to be able to say, and these are four additional things I think council should look at, even though they didn't charge us with looking at them.
Okay.
For example, relooking at the definition of youth centers, and I got to have four others.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Zick. So Director Lee or Director Drapkin, would that be something that we would just want to have show in the record? Or I don't think we need to make a formal vote on all the things that we would like for council to do, that they didn't ask us to do. Right? Is it okay to have it just, and for the record, I would recommend, or we would recommend?
I think the commission should vote on that, those questions. It just, it makes the record cleaner when it comes back to the council. So I would suggest voting on it.
Voting on it?
On these separate topics. Should or should not be part of the Planning Commission motion in general for the commission to look at. One thing I also wanted to add and was that another reason why I suggested to not really veer off the poll, so to speak, is that there were many numerous items, I should say, that the council considered and were not part of their motion specifically. Either it didn't pass or the all council unanimously disagreed or agreed with not having it as part of it. So not knowing those all off the top of my head, it's easier to stay with what the council did direct the Planning Commission to look at.
Yeah. And I'll say from my experience, because I was there when it happened, and it was like Oprah Day as far as items go, like you get an item and you get an item, right? And I don't think anyone was denied whatever they thought was important. So if it was important, then they would have said it. And council is comprised of folks from all over the spectrum. So Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, I took detailed notes of what each council member raised as a motion for us to consider. And I forwarded my detailed notes to staff the next day after the meeting. There were only three items that were moved on but not voted. There was no majority. And as I look at them, they were inconsequential. So it isn't like they asked or wanted us to look at any of the four things I'm going to mention and said, nah, we don't want to do that. What they brought up, either they retracted themselves or in the discussion determined, not that, not that important.
Okay. All right. Yes?
Thank you. Just as an issue of procedure and streamlining this process, it's close to 9:30 at this point. Perhaps the Planning Commission wants to focus on the items listed out by the City Council. This wouldn't prohibit the Planning Commission from, when an ordinance is brought back and the Planning Commission makes recommendation to the City Council on the ordinance as drafted by staff following the Planning Commission's direction, the Planning Commission would be free at that point to then add suggestions in the record that the City Council might want to continue, consider, rather than doing them now tonight.
Yeah, I think you make a good point, Mr. Preziosi. Thank you. I think we have an intention to do this, so if it's all the same to everyone, let's wait until it comes back. We'll add it to the record as a, you know, we'll call it the smorgasbord item. Look at all these things. Does that work for everyone? We'll just focus on the eight tonight. Sure. Yes, Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, I agree. And I don't know, Mr. Drapkin, if this is the moment that I could do so or not, but I have the text here for the Caltrans relocation program thing. I don't know if this might be able to be circulated to my colleagues or not. It's four pages.
Is this relevant to any of the eight items?
Yeah. I had number eight, Mr. Chair, and it was referenced by Ms. Halligan during her presentation, the Caltrans document. And I just wanted to provide this for the record for my colleagues to see what Ms. Halligan was referring to during her presentation.
Okay.
Chair, if I can interject, point of procedure. If the commissioner wishes to do that, Mr. Vavar wished to do that, it would need to be made available for the public who can simultaneously see what's given to the Planning Commission.
I agree. Any issue if we add it to our next meeting versus tonight's?
No.
Okay. Is that okay?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Vavar, are you okay with that? We add it to the second reading of this so that it's a part of our more substantive package?
Second reading, if I remember correctly, wouldn't that be when we're looking at the actual ordinance language?
Yes, yes, but we still get a second bite at the apple, so.
I would just say the next meeting that this is discussed, second reading means something different.
Okay. All right.
One other thing is staff has reviewed the Caltrans provisions, Commissioner Vavar, so we might be able to touch on it a little bit when we get to that number eight. So just to be helpful and without having to pass out some information like that.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay.
All right.
That works.
Anyone else? Have we agreed to agree to the rules?
Sure.
Okay. All right, gang. Let's go ahead and start with number one. Establishing a minimum separation between cannabis storefronts. Generally speaking, without any, I mean, let's say one foot or more, is anyone here in favor generally of separation requirements between cannabis storefronts? Raise your hand.
Actually, raise your hand.
Well, got it. We got seven. Okay. Of the seven, who thinks 25 feet? Raise your hand. Of a separate, because I'm trying to start low, or we can start high and then go down.
Low to high, it makes more sense.
Low to high? Not by, not by...
25.
I was thinking increments of 25.
Oh, no.
100, 200.
Increments of one.
To 1,000, if you will. Yeah. The two proposed?
500 and 1,000.
Okay. Who here is in favor of 500? Raise your hand. We've got one, two. Anyone in favor of 1,000? One, two, three, four. Okay. Anyone in favor of less than 500? Got one, I think. Yeah, Vice Chair.
If I may say, I mean, the starting point for me is 500, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues if there's any... I'm open to be persuaded either way.
I have a data point that might...
I'd love to hear it.
Might not, you might not agree.
And I will say, just before we move forward, any recommendation that we make, if we can make it relate to fact, anything that can be measured, any, anything like that, instead of feeling, that's just the general approach, everybody. So Commissioner Zick?
I may have a feeling later, but please. The distance from Stizzy to Off the Charts is 750 feet. The distance from Stizzy to the Mesa Verde Center location that was most recently controversial, 750 feet. So if the distance was only 500 feet, all those locations would still get a pass, even though the community has given us a fair amount of noise, they don't like that. If the separation distance was 1,000 feet, then if Stizzy was there first, the other two wouldn't have been able to do it. If Off the Charts was there first, then the Mesa Verde Center would be able to do it because it'd be almost 1,500 feet away.
Okay.
So 1,000 feet would have solved the problem at Adams Harbor.
Okay. But not 500?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else on the topic? I think we've got our measure... Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, and I think just sort of more high level, in my discussions with City, Senate, and staff today, I heard very good reasons for why there should be a separation in the first place, as oftentimes in what they have seen, because a lot of these businesses are so close together, they often start to approach the line of cutting corners or even sort of not following code. And so from a code enforcement perspective, also makes it more difficult to kind of see who's doing what in attempts to be able to pull in more customers.
Okay. I just realized something, everybody. I made a grave error, and I didn't open things up for public comment.
Nope.
So let's go ahead and do that. And I apologize, everyone. I don't usually make this kind of mistake, but that's all on me.
You're also jet-lagged.
Yeah, I have a new dog, so. All right, so with that, again, apologies. I'll now go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this item, come to either podium. And we'll give you three minutes, and we'll start with you, sir. To my right. Yep. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, sorry. I'll be quick. It's past my bedtime as well, so. My name is Patrick Martin. I'm a homeowner and resident of Costa Mesa for over 15 years. I'm one of the operators at Mr. Nice Guy on Newport Boulevard. I was hoping the city would allow for us to allow the verbiage cannabis on our signage of our storefront. The reason for this is that we get people every day stopping by and asking what type of business it is. Sometimes they're happy, sometimes they're mad. Usually, they're just very curious. So our location is a former donut store, Dippity Donuts, and we get families entering our parking lot every day, assuming Mr. Nice Guy is a rebranded donut store. So it'd be very helpful, especially for security, to let the customers know what the store is before coming in. So simple signage that allows for the word cannabis or dispensary would solve these issues. This would be helpful, this would be helpful for our security so they don't have to deal with any, you know, families coming in, husbands, wives, and kids. Also, just another quick example. My wife was driving the other day down on Newport Boulevard, and she was passing by Nectar, which is another dispensary. And she actually thought it was a juice store. So as she was pulling in, pulling in, I, you know, I was asking her, hey, why are you pulling in here? And she said, oh, I thought this is a juice store, so I was just going to get some pressed juice. So I just wanted to throw it out there that just a simple, small sign that says cannabis or dispensary would actually notify the public of what the business is. And I think it'll be very helpful for not only us as the operator, but just the general public as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. How's the master circle?
Mary Ann or the master circle. First of all, I have to say thank you because I think the conversations tonight have been fabulous. I think when the measure was first implemented, it kind of seemed like there was a very strict, you know, there was a very strict process for the application process, but there were some very loose guidelines in regards to locations and, you know, different minimum distances and things of that nature. And I think it was kind of thrown against the wall to see what was going to hit and stick. And here we are, two and a half, three years later, and I think there are some very vocal groups in the city, different parts of the city, not just the master circle, but have voiced their opinions. And so it was really wonderful to see that you're listening to the community. Because I think here in Costa Mesa, having grown up in the area, we really do have a strong sense of community here. And I think the perfect example of that is a lot of the homegrown businesses that started here. Theodore Robbins, which has been, you know, used and been awarded and exemplified here. Mi Casa, El Ranchito. And again, just the perfect cherry on the top is the Snoopy Houses out in front that was donated by a family that had been here for years and wanted it to stay in the community. To me, that just means a whole lot. So again, thank you for your efforts, and I really think we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Warr. It's nice to see you again. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm just here for moral support, really, for Mary Ann. I'm also on the master circle. We raised hell here a few months ago and appreciate the patience and the great conversation previously. And yeah, you know, just want to, I'm loving the way the conversation's going, increasing the distance between residential and retail for cannabis would be great. And I, I'll just throw it out there, I don't see an issue with adding signage, something basic like dispensary or cannabis, it says liquor store. It is confusing. I drive by those shops, I don't know what they are, so I'll throw a bone there. But yeah, you know, I'm in favor of limiting the additional stores as much as possible, and definitely increasing separation and keep increasing distances would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good.
My name's Christopher Glue, and as most of you know, I represent quite a few of the shops that operate in the city. And I just echo the sentiments of my colleague who already spoke. It has become a problem. We do get customers coming into the shops quite frequently, assuming that they're something that they aren't in fact. And part of the ordinance is that we're supposed to be able to identify these shops, and without being able to use the word cannabis, we're really missing the point. People need to understand that they are walking into a cannabis-related business, and that's important mainly because there are people, in fact, that don't want to walk into a cannabis dispenser, and it creates a quite awkward moment for those folks when they come in and are shocked by what they've found. So our old Dippity Doughnuts location is one that's often thought to be rebranded as a new type of doughnut shop, so you can imagine that happens quite frequently. I would love to see the Commission also consider the badge fees that are currently in place. I know it's not part of the directive from the City Council, but it is worth noting that the badge fees are $600 per employee. I've heard from all of the retail shops that has restricted their ability to hire staff and maintain staff. It's caused a lot of employee shortages. Also with the LiveScan, that number is, you know, higher than any other city we've ever experienced, and that fee was supposed to be a cost offset fee, and it does not cost $600 to run a LiveScan. Something that we think the Commission should consider because there is a social policy, and a lot of cities have eliminated the LiveScan. San Ana, I know Commissioner Vivar, you said you spoke with people in San Ana and some of the other Commissioners. I'd like to invite you to reach out to them and see what their experiences have been and why they eliminated it altogether. Thank you for your time, as always, and appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glue. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Mark Adams. There we go. And thank you all, you guys are workhorses. I don't know if I could do your job, honestly. And we're an applicant as well, we're actually coming in at the next meeting for our CUP for a cannabis business. And I guess my question was for the buffer zones, because, you know, as we applied, we didn't know, you know, where existing locations were, and nobody was happy about having locations directly next door. But as we see, you know, so much restaurants and bars, and there's restaurants that are always adjacent, and bars, and liquor stores, and grooming, and, you know, hair salons and things of that nature, and business usually works itself out. But I can understand the reason for the buffer zones. I guess my question would be, would that, I guess, be for new applications that get submitted, because we already have applications in place, and, you know, have put in over a year worth of work on some of these, and there's a lot of people like myself that are still in the queue. And so I guess that was my only question and comment. Thank you.
Right, thank you, sir. Right, anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Anyone on Zoom or telephone?
Keith, you may provide your public comments.
Hi, Commissioner, thank you. I'm actually visiting some elderly family in Florida, so it's 1:00 a.m. here, so I go for you guys. But this is, I appreciate you guys taking my calls. As you know, this is a pretty important issue for me specifically. I've been in this process, I'm a 25-plus-year homeowner in Costa Mesa, I've owned six-plus properties, bought and sold. And I'm in this process almost three years now, at $300,000. And I applied without using a Measure X component. I applied the way we were supposed to. A lot of these stores that are currently open have used a Measure X component that are no longer part of their store. So we played by the rules, we applied, they were allowed to apply 30 days early, we applied by, you know, when we could, I applied four minutes after the portal opened, and three years now, down the road, I'm in the queue. I have my pre-application in, I've been, city staff has come out, approved my property, and now I'm waiting for our turn to get a hearing. My concern is that, you know, City Council put a lot of effort into this when they passed this ordinance. We relied on that when we found our property. I mean, like I said, three years almost now, waiting for our CUP hearing, and it's painful if this rug gets pulled out from underneath us based on concentration. We're across the street from High Seas, we're in a commercial corridor, there are no residences. Us being separated by a street seems decently appropriate. I mean, Taco Bell opens next to Del Taco, they both serve tacos, but they're of different varieties. There's hundreds of thousands of different varietals of weed, of cannabis and weed-related products, you know, gummies, everything. So one store, you know, on one block won't have all of that stuff. They, you know, there's different varietals of everything, and I think, you know, just in terms of, my biggest problem right now, I guess, is the concentration potential that would potentially pull this rug out from under us and cost me my life savings of this at this point. So I, my, I think the issue on this is because we played fair and we played by the rules and didn't use this Measure X straw man to get a 30-day early priority application, you know, a potential store across the street from us could now have access to have a business license, and we don't. I just consider that patently unfair. I see there's different areas of Costa Mesa that a concentration might be an issue, and that's what Planning Commission is for, that's what you guys are for, that when they come in front of Planning Commission, you'll get residents and everyone else that'll have a problem with that specific application. Where we are, we, there, there's no issue with that. We're in a commercial corridor, in 1912, the building has been empty for almost 10 years, dilapidated in a mall that we're about to put millions of dollars into a building, you know, to build and to.
All right, thank you, Keith, time's up, but good luck in Florida and have a good time with your family. Anyone else on Zoom?
No, there is not, Mr. Chair.
Or telephone?
No, there is not.
All right, thank you, Anna. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and Commissioners, before we officially get into our voting, do you have any further questions for staff? Vice Chair.
Yeah, I think it's important for the public and for all of us to just refresh our understanding of how this works, based on what the last commenter talked about. These recommendations that we're kind of settling on tonight, is it going to, how does it, how is it going to affect or not affect those that are in queue? I just think, because that's gonna, if we say 1,000 or 500 or 25 or whatever, with the understanding that that's gonna pull the rug out from those in queue or not, it makes a big difference in how, at least, I think a lot of us are gonna make our decisions.
I can try to answer that, I'm gonna answer it broadly. Essentially, the answer is it depends. I think one part of the discussion, once we have a better idea of what the Commission's direction is on these eight points, part of the discussion will be when and how those requirements get applied. So I think that's just a second part of the discussion. It depends, is the answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else before we get in? All right, so officially starting with number one. Minimum separation between cannabis storefronts. Anyone in favor of 500 and above, next one being 1,000? Raise your hand if you're in favor of 500. It's one, two, three, four, five, okay. Starting with 500, and then the next one is 1,000. Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, okay. For 1,000. Are there any other increments we need to go through? 500 and 1,000? Vice Chair, do you have thoughts?
I have thoughts, thanks. I just want to put this out there because we're dealing with several buffers tonight, so when it comes to buffers, this is, maybe we all have different understandings in our mind, but it hasn't been said explicitly. What's the problem we're trying to solve here? Right. So I like, Mr. Zick, the way we can kind of spatially understand what 500 or 750 feet is. Another way that I think of it is the traditional American lording pattern, so our old downtown, 25 feet, 25 foot, that's what a storefront has always been, right? So based on that, 500 feet's 20 doors down. Is that enough? Is that too close to each other? That's how I'm thinking about it. I don't know if that's, if you double that and you say, oh, we have 50-foot wide storefronts, you know, you know, you could kind of do the math, but we have wide streets, we don't have streets that wide, so, you know, across the street, 40 feet, and then down, 450 feet, that's nine 50-foot wide storefronts, right? So just another way to think about it, but I'd like to hear anybody's thoughts on what we're even trying to solve before we start throwing out numbers.
Well, I, with all due respect, I think that whatever was established 100 years ago doesn't apply now since our storefronts are a lot bigger than they used to be. And I think what we're trying to solve here, Mr. Toller, is, Commissioner Toller, is the fact that we've had multiple meetings here, this chambers, where people have said, you know what, like, we are not opposed to a measure queue establishment, but we don't want the street corner to become basically cannabis corner or cannabis row, and I believe that is what we're trying to address, and I not have sections of our city just turn into a cannabis area.
Chair?
Yes.
I literally wrote, what's the problem, at the top of these eight things? So I don't know, maybe you've got some engineering background also, because that's the way engineers look at things, what's the problem, so they can drill down to solution. And the way I would try to answer that question would be to look at the opposite condition and say that if we had 100 applications, processed them all, we're raking in all kinds of tax dollars, and not a single person came to the podium and said, please stop, that's what no problem would look like. But we've had, with many of the applications, people come forward and have issues with different things. And to me, those various issues have bubbled up in one way or another to the council, to the point where they said, we're hearing people complain about these issues or suggest these solutions to the issues they're complaining about, let's take a look at it. So I think in some respects, each of these eight things represent a different problem that we're trying to solve, but in general, I think the problem we're trying to solve is that there's unhappy people with what we're doing. That's, I think, the problem we're trying to solve.
Yeah, that's a good, good observation, Commissioner Zick. And again, I think if we can make these findings, make findings for why we make these recommendations so much, the better. Not just how we feel or what we might, may assume people think, but to actually have it comport with something measurable. I will say, as far as having a minimum separation between cannabis storefronts and not, and just going with, you know, the status quo, I think what, I share a similar logic as Commissioner Vivar in that we seem to perceive the community does not want cannabis row, or density where you just see one cannabis store right after the next, where it's so dense that just as soon as you see a cannabis store open up, another one is shutting down because there's so much competition. What I, what I look for is stability economically, and it's not to pick winners and losers, but to say like, well, what's the point of even doing this in the beginning if we know that there's gonna be so much competition where people are just gonna not be able to make money, we're gonna see jobs turning over, we're gonna see instability across our city if we just open all up everything all the time, kind of like what it's been up to this point. It has not been an issue per se up to this point, because there's only eight of them that are open out of the 23 or so that we've approved. But it could go down that path, and I think that this is a logical preemptive way to create stability in this market if we plan on having this use here long term. So that's my logic on this, and I'm happy, yeah, Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, and other great examples is San Ana, Long Beach, San Diego, and Vista have similar buffer recommendations, so we wouldn't be an outlier and.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else before we go on to two? All right, let's go on to two. Increase the minimum separation between cannabis storefronts and, quote, youth centers, as defined in the municipal code, from 600 feet to 1,000 feet, to be consistent with other sensitive use separation requirements, and I'm happy to hear everyone's thoughts. Or if anyone has a thought to share, Commissioner Zick.
All right, so the staff report on page nine discussing this item identifies quite clearly that the 600 feet originates from the state's minimum requirement. It was Councilmember Marr who made the motion to have us consider this, and it was out of, I would call it a housekeeping interest in trying to have a consistent separation number used for the various things that we have separation distances for, and 1,000 feet is the one that keeps showing up, so let's change the 600 to 1,000. So that's the origination of the idea. Staff has also quite clearly pointed out in the staff report that whether it's 600 or 1,000 has absolutely no effect whatsoever on any of the existing approved CUPs, or most likely, no impact whatsoever on any of the applications in the queue. So we could certainly make it 1,000, clean it up, satisfy Councilmembers Marr's interest in that, but it'll have absolutely no material effect on the number of cannabis operations and where they're located, et cetera. So, I mean, I support doing it, but to me, it's inconsequential either way.
Okay, all right, anyone else before we move on to the soft vote?
Yeah, well, I agree that at this moment is inconsequential, but on reading the staff report, staff did point out that even though at this moment it wouldn't really do anything, it would preclude potential establishments within commercial zones that do fall within the 1,000-foot buffer, so at the moment, it really doesn't seem like much, but who really knows in the future, assuming this is a long-term ordinance, that somebody might want to open within that buffer, and then that youth center might have problems with that.
Yeah, and I'm reading on page 10, it's the last paragraph before exhibit three. It says, however, 1,000-foot separation requirement would reduce the number of potential locations for future retail cannabis business applications. So it kind of hints that it would not affect what we have in the queue. Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, and I think if you were concerned about the idea that this could potentially limit future applications or future businesses, I guess the question I'd have is to the person that was worried about that, well, don't you think we have too many right now? Are we trying to make room for more? So I don't think this is something we have to worry about.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move it along. Anyone in favor of maintaining the state minimum for 600 feet? Raise your hand. Yeah, Commissioner Kleebak?
I was just gonna ask a question really quick, because as I'm looking at these, I'm kind of looking at the benchmark cities, and I think this goes for the 500 one that we just talked about before, too. And just looking at cities of similar size and kind of what they have, do we have a feeling for the issues that they're having in those cities? I mean, if we look at, for example, this one, most of the cities have a 600-foot separation from youth centers. Do we have any information about whether they're having similar issues or concerns? Just for benchmarking sake?
I haven't seen anything but Director Dropkin, Director Lee, Ms. Halligan. I've kind of, I've kind of felt like there's so many conditions of approval that we put on, on the applicants, that it's, it's not so much of an issue to me, because kids aren't gonna be able to walk in, there's already security guards, the front is obfuscated so that you can't really, you cannot see into the product. You may be able to see into, like the one on 17th Street, you can see into the waiting area, but you can't actually see the product. And in its current form, notwithstanding any other items that we end up getting to. And in its current form, notwithstanding any other items that we end up getting to, you wouldn't even know that it's a dispensary if you're a kid or otherwise unless someone told you, generally speaking. I don't know if that makes sense. Commissioner Andrade? Okay. Director Dropkin or Director Lee, would you?
I can start here. So I haven't done extensive research on this specific question, but my impression is that many other cities that use the 600-foot separation did so because it was a state law minimum. And I'm not sure that too much went into it beyond that. If this is important to the commission, we can deep dive a little more into some of the reasoning behind that. But that's what I expect to find.
Okay. All right, no other questions? Who is in favor of maintaining the 600-foot minimum? Raise your hand. That's one, two, three.
All right. That's three.
Okay. Who's in favor of going 1,000? Was it the equal opposite, four to three?
While you're writing that down, if I may opine?
Yeah.
Yeah, to Commissioner Vivar's point, if we're trying to avoid, quote-unquote, cannabis corner or cannabis row, I get that. You don't want to see the same thing on every corner. And that's why I think 500 feet suffices for that. I totally understand that. 10 doors down, 20 doors down, whatever. That's, that's sufficient to preclude those sorts of things. I totally agree with Chair Erith's comments about this being kind of a silly thing. Youth centers, we, we need to push dispensaries 400 feet further away when, in reality, kids aren't going to know what they are or care or anything. So for what it's worth.
Yeah, and I'll say again, as a qualifier, it's notwithstanding any, any other changes that we make beyond this particular one. So we've got six more to go. So we'll see about that as well. All right, establishing a minimum separation between residential zoning districts and cannabis storefronts. Thoughts? Commissioner Zick.
All right, so this has come up on several applications as an issue. The most notable, or maybe one of the earliest, was the master circle. We have no separation requirement right now for residential. And that location was literally across the backyard wall of residential homes. Probably two were, were in direct proximity. So zero separation from a property line to a property line, but using the measurement to the premises. If you go across the parking lot, I don't recall exactly what it was, 50, 100 feet. I don't have that measurement in front of me. But if we had a measurement separation from residential of whatever that distance was, let's say 100 feet, we wouldn't have had that problem. That application would not have gotten to us because of that. We had a similar concern about residential proximity on the Cabrillo, and we went around and round on that one. There was some residential resistance to it, and staff was trying to help protect the residents by focusing on the use of that CL zone. And again, had there been a separation requirement from residential of some distance, whatever it is from the house across Cabrillo over to that location, maybe that was 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, we wouldn't have had that problem. There was the one adjacent to the motorhome park. I believe that was on Harbor Boulevard. And again, similar situation, there were people concerned about that. So I think some separation distance is needed so we don't have a cannabis operation right, like master circle, right next to a home. To, to me, that, that was a bad situation, and our code should have helped us avoid that. And we kind of luckily avoided that, and there was no appeal. I think we need a separation distance regarding residential, even though there's an indication in the staff report that that might be somewhat burdensome. I think we need to be erring on the side of protecting people in their homes. It's their castle. I've said that before. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair?
I, I like that point. Most of the controversial ones have been very close. Would you say within 100 feet, though, Commissioner Zick? I mean, it's, it's something, it's really like the, the ones that have been controversial that you decided were 50, 100 feet. It was really close comparatively, right? Okay, I think that's a really good point. I do want to bring up, again, exhibit two on page eight of the staff report. This, as you said, Ms. Halligan, this really quick analysis kind of lit up the entire property, whereas that's not really how we measure. We measured to the premises or the, the building footprint of these things. And that affects the, the bottom paragraph on page seven. So these 200 and 500-foot buffers don't really, they wouldn't really result in 67 and 86% decreases in available properties.
Vice Chair Toller, we also haven't applied the other separation requirements. So I do believe that we would experience a further decrease.
Okay, but they wouldn't be this drastic because this analysis assumed the entire property is disqualified if the buffer touches a property, the corner of a large property, for example.
That is correct. So if we are directed, we'd have to go through and start measuring license, the proposed license premises.
Okay, okay. I'll say before we get to it that we have seen issues with residential sharing a property line. That has been the most consequential that we've seen up to this point. So in my mind, I'm thinking a one-foot buffer as a start to where you're just not necessarily sharing a property line with residential, and then it goes up from there. Clearly, when you start looking at 200-foot to a five, a potential 500-foot buffer to residential, then everything gets eaten up, and then it, it, it really limits the commercial availability for this, which you may or may not be on that side. But for me, it's about protecting adjacent residents who may not want this, even though it's a part of the ordinance. There's, there's at least enough of a buffer to guarantee that it's not stacked up right on their property line. So that's where my logic is at the moment. Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this, and I agree with that. The only concern with the property line that in my mind could come up is if we... And we've seen properties like this for retail cannabis establishments where there's multiple buildings on one property. I'm thinking of, for example, where the, what was that dealership called? The one on Harbor, that way, Harbor and Adams?
Which one?
Buick or something?
You're talking about the one that's way overparked?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. I think you're talking about 2845 Harbor.
Yeah, was that like a Buick or something like that?
It was, it was a car dealership.
Yeah.
Globe?
Yeah, that one, yeah. And, and Stizzy, for example, where, again, it's not necessarily, you can't really draw the property line because there are so many buildings in that area, kind of like shared buildings or shared parking spaces. Sort of what we saw tonight with the school and the, and the other property where maybe they've been, you know, back, back in the day, they used to be one property, but now they're not. So the only thing is, how would we measure the, the distance from property line there? Because, you know, would we measure the whole property or?
No, you measure the premise of the cannabis business.
Yeah, but Chair Erith's comment is, I think, was the one foot he mentioned about that would have been the property line to property line was the idea, correct?
Yeah, I mean, just theoretically, it's not sharing a property line or fence.
Right, and that's, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, happy to hear thoughts, Vice Chair.
If, I was thinking the same thing, something like you can't decide a rear property line. But you do get multi-tenant buildings where you have residential use on one side, and the commercial property has 50 tenants, and the cannabis is way over on the other side. So is that whole property disqualified because of that? Or could it be kind of a both-and? I think it would have to be like, in the case of a commercial multi-tenant property, then it, then it defaults to some fixed number, like 100 feet or something. But I'm hesitant to complicate the way we measure and measure everything differently, too.
Yeah, which is what I was trying to say, yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, like, who cares how I feel? But I would say that if the cannabis business is the sole tenant on a property, then I would count it at anywhere within their property. If it's multi-tenant, then I would probably count it, like, from wherever their actual, you know, space is within that multi-tenant building out.
Agreed, yeah.
But I'm, I'm amenable to, to this. So if anyone has any thoughts on how best to measure or just getting a good definition for a residential buffer, Commissioner Zick.
So Commissioner Toller, I'm trying to think of an example where there is a parcel that has on it a development of residential as well as a commercial retail that could include cannabis.
Sorry, I meant residential next door to a, a multi-tenant commercial property.
On separate parcels?
Yes, yeah.
Well, the separation measurement would be from the property line of the residential parcel to the building edge where the cannabis business is. So like the master circle, that similar kind of idea, from the property line to the premises, to the edge of the building.
Yeah, I mean, I like the simplicity of that, just having a fixed number and not having a two-tier system.
Okay, all right.
But I, I do agree with the idea of you have a cannabis establishment take up a whole, like, say, multi-tenant building and turns into one building, that essentially, in, in practice, the whole property is being used for cannabis-related business activity.
Yeah, including their parking and their property line would be the, the starting point for the measurement. Is that helpful at all, or have we complicated the cartography?
I propose 100 feet.
Okay, let's start with 100 feet. Raise your hand if you are in favor of 100-foot buffer to residential. One, two, and three. Four, four, okay. Does anyone here want more than 100?
101.
No, not you. You already voted. Does anyone want more or less? Because I'm, I would recommend less.
I would, I would love the, I'm fine with the city's recommendation of 200.
I think it wasn't a recommendation, it was just a measurement for an example.
The example, I'll take the example.
Okay, I know, not to split hairs, but, you know, we're doing it anyways.
If I could just, I think my overarching concern with this is that we're treating this product differently than other products and that people live in close proximity to liquor stores. I would probably rather have people walking to a liquor store than driving to a liquor store. And we talk about walkable communities. So I'm, I'm just concerned that there are other products that people may also deem as not being healthy that don't get the same scrutiny that this particular product gets.
For sure.
I, I am very wary of the double standard that we're kind of applying. So I think it should be less.
Okay. If you had to make a, I mean, if you even want a buffer, and you certainly don't have to, what would that number look like to you? Commissioner Kleebak?
Well, could we benchmark it to liquor stores? What is the buffer to liquor stores?
None, I don't think. Can't liquor be next to residential as long as it's within the zone? Yeah, yeah, so there is none.
But then there are limitations on how many liquor stores could be within a tract, sense of tract, but that's different.
But we get, we get to waive those, too, if we want, so.
Well, yeah.
Those come up, you know, for ABC licenses, and, you know, I don't think we've denied one yet. So, yes, Commissioner Zick?
I can't think of a single new liquor store that has come before us in the time I've been here. Nor can I even imagine a resident saying, "Thank goodness they're putting a liquor store next to my house." So I, I don't disagree with you about the idea of a double standard, but just because having a liquor store next to you is, is bad, and I might characterize it that way, doesn't mean, well, then we ought to allow this to be next to you, too, so that we're equally bad.
Okay, yeah, and I know from where you and I live in the same community, our closest liquor store is like a quarter mile away, so.
I just, one last thing.
Yeah.
It's 1026. Let's call it what it is, right? We understand this is, is this product federally accepted on the federal level? No. Can this business do banking like any other business? No. Can this biz, does any of the business require 24-hour security like we have set? No, or at least during business hours? No. Any other business that, why does it need that security? Because there is a product there that can be taken advantage of, right? It's also flush cash business.
Yeah.
No, so very different to any kind of business. Is there, in, you know, indirect lines to the black market? And any other business like this? No, so it's very different. We can't possibly compare one to the other, to any kind of business.
Yeah, I, I mean, I totally get where you're coming from, Commissioner Andrade. I, I often think back, and ironically enough, to our master circle Bristol item, I know, where the vice chair used the analogy of a jewelry store to talk about the actual product. I don't know if you remember that, Vice Chair. But it was about, you know, the, the seriousness of the product that's being sold and what would warrant 24-hour security. Well, we promulgated 24-hour security because we thought that this had certain elements that we wanted to protect. And like diamonds, they are, it's rather, you know, it's a big moneymaker. It's cash and...
With indirect lines to the black market.
Yeah, you know, blood, blood diamonds and conflict diamonds and all that, right? So there, you can liken it to different things. So I don't want to, like, city council didn't ask us about 24-hour security, did they? Yeah, let's go, let's go for it.
They tried.
Yeah, all right. Establishing a maximum number of retail cannabis, cannabis businesses for a cap. All right, happy to hear some quick thoughts on this. We're halfway through after that. Commissioner Rojas?
Just a quick question because you're throwing numbers out, and I've already lost track. I know, how many do we have currently approved?
22.
22 approved and eight are functional?
I think it's like, it's, it's moving by the day, but yeah, like eight or nine.
Okay, and the only, I, I said this a while back, but I was just kind of curious about it, and these numbers aren't going to support it. But we look at our neighbor to the north, you know, Santa Ana, triple our population, their limit is at 30. We are one-third of that. We're almost at their limit, like, we're triple of the opposite. So I don't know, I mean, if we say, all right, we limited, let's, let's match that at least, you know, cap it at 30, but I believe that there's more than eight applications remaining, and then that becomes an issue. So I'm not really sure where the limit is. I'm just talking out loud. I don't have an answer or a solution. I'm just spitballing out loud.
No, it's a good one, and I, I have a, a question to kind of add on to your comment, which is, well, what is the point of limiting? And, and I'm not priming the discussion one way or the other, but like, if we are to recommend a cap as a committee, why?
Well, I, I think I, I'll, I'll take a stab at that one in the sense that for the same reason that we've been asked not to create a cannabis row, not to have saturation of stores, not to have too much, it's just to sit there and say that there is an end, that the, there's a limit to what we're willing to do. But if we looked at it proportionally, we've already exceeded that limit by a lot. And a lot of these stores, we don't know. And I, I don't mean to say one way or the other, but one of the comments that jumped out at me in the letters that we received was, you know, and I, I noticed this, we drive by them, and a lot of them are empty, you know? So what is the, you know, I see empty parking lots more than I see, you know, swollen parking lots and overloaded parking lots. So I wonder, I'm just thinking out loud again, guys, but are we doing a disservice here to people by allowing them to go down this road, promising something that there might not, might not be lucrative for them? I don't know. I don't know if we're measuring what the success rate is of the current stores that are operating. I don't know if we're, we're checking in on them or where we are because this is such a young spot where we are. So again, I don't have answers to this. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here of how many, how many should we cap it at? I mean, do we just cap it at what we have now and see what happens? Or, or what the story is? I don't know.
So let me ask staff a question because I, I, okay, I think it's in the middle of page five. It's that larger paragraph, which has a recommendation based on HDL's guidance. And if we go off of HDL's guidance, we've exceeded that tremendously already. And HDL is our city's professional third party, right? So if there was any quantitative analysis here or any kind of solid professional recommendation, why not take it from the person? why not take it from the person who's actually running the permits for us? So, Commissioner Zick.
So in terms of the question, why would, why, why would we limit the number? The first thing that comes to my mind, well, first of all, the horse is out of the, out of the barn, so I think we all understand that. But if we were back at the beginning, even with HDL's recommendation, why would you set a limit? And I would say the reason why you would set a limit early and low is because this is a brand-new industry, brand-new business, a whole bunch of rules, we don't know how it's going to shake out, but we didn't do that. We opened the thing wide open and said, come all, come any, and, and we just walked into a big pile of problems. And now, we're coming back and we're trying to deal with the fact that we didn't do that, and cleaning up a mess is a messy process, and so that's kind of where we are. I think the second thing is that for a long time, people have been asking or recommending, Chair De Ercle had recommended a long time to council and to his golfing buddies, hey, there ought to be a cap. For a long time, never put a cap in, okay? They never put a cap in, and they probably should have. When staff put their report together on page four, Santa Ana has a cap that equates to one for every 10,000. Long Beach has a ratio, they have no cap, but based on the number of licenses, they have a ratio that comes out to one every 15,000. La Habra comes out to a ratio of one every 15,000. Palm Springs, one every 2,000. San Diego, one for every 40,000 population. Stanton, one for every 10,000. Vista, one for every 10,000. If Costa Mesa had 120,000 people, and we don't quite, but the math is easier that way, that'd be 12 stores.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to be on parity with these other people, it'd be 12 stores. And you might say, well, 60, that, that's a great number. Here's the second reason why we don't want that. Because when you have conversations with people about that, what you also have is a discussion that says, well, you know, we don't actually think they're all going to be successful, you know, half of them are probably going to go out of business, you know, the strong ones, the well-run ones. So we, as a city, we as leaders, we as administrative leaders, are rooting against the home team, we're rooting against businesses succeeding. Shouldn't we be trying to help businesses succeed rather than say, yeah, step into it, invest your money, take your chance? This isn't Las Vegas. And I think that'd be the second reason why we should limit the number, because we'll have a better success rate. No one is served by these businesses going out of business, and we essentially have created a culture that invites that. They're all rolling the dice.
Yeah, and I have to say, Commissioner Zick, I don't, I don't think we've ever really talked too much, you know, about free-market capitalism and the invisible hand and letting the market do the correcting. I've, I've, you know, I've been somewhat ambivalent about just unregulated businesses, but I'm also not a big government person either. I don't think a bunch of regulation is necessary as well. In certain cases like this, I think the more prudent approach would have been tracking with what HDL had recommended initially, and even now, if it still stands, and then also in relationship to the, the population as, as well. I think that would have been the best approach, but that's hindsight's 2020, so.
I think this is a case where you do need the government intrusion, the heavy hand of government, because this is a drug we're dealing with. This is something we don't want kids to have, right? So you have to put the rules, if we were just going to say, yeah, let the free market work all this out, then we'd say, you don't have to close off your front windows, you know, you advertise the heck out of this thing, why not? If we were going to let the free market go, but there are a lot of reasons why we're not doing that. I think the cap and all our conditions of approval all relate to, this needs to be a highly regulated business. It is, in fact, a highly regulated business, we're simply doing our part.
Okay. I want to move this conversation along, because that was my promise to you guys.
Are we going to try to settle on the number tonight, or we can't do that, you think?
A soft vote?
Yeah, let's soft, let's soft vote this and then.
Okay.
Vice Chair.
Can, can we just get a, can you remind us how many are in line? Nine have opened, and how many have submitted applications?
31. So there are, 22 have CUPs, nine are open, and there are 31 applications remaining.
So.
I want to ask what the cap would do to, it would cut off some that have already invested, right? Like, this is, this is one where the rug does get pulled out from under people.
So Vice Chair Toller, depending on how we're directed, staff would have to go and look at where that line would be drawn, like what the threshold would be to establish how many applications would be affected.
I feel like the number has to be informed by that nuance, and otherwise.
Vice Chair, there could be a mechanism that, over time, and I, I could tell you what I think the mechanism ought to be, but just in general, I think there could be a mechanism that gets you from, everyone's in the queue, they're going to get their shot at it, but over time, there's going to be a process, my idea would be there, a process that gets you back to the cap you should have had at the beginning. I'm not saying what the process ought to be, but to your point and the concern, and it's a fair one, if somebody's in the queue, like Keith, they ought, they ought to get their day in court, and, and we shouldn't pull the rug out from under them, I agree with that sentiment, but that doesn't mean that we ought to have a cap that allows 50, 60 of these things.
So, quick question for staff. Procedurally, or informationally, I think all applicants were informed that the ordinance could be subject to change at any minute, correct? Like, if it was, if it was city council's will, they could make changes and they would have to abide by those changes, just generally speaking, nothing specific.
It's always the case that when law is established, if the law changes, that can happen at any time.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't want to assume, but I think as part of the, the, the risk of doing business, you have to know that you're subject to changes in the law, and that those changes may be in your favor and they may not be in your favor at certain times, but that's the cost of doing certain types of business, especially high-risk ones. So, just to facilitate this along, who, and I'm happy to hear your thoughts after I asked this first one, who thinks that we should cap cannabis at where it is currently?
Meaning?
Do you mean 22?
Like, not processing anymore, beyond what we've done already?
So what number, sorry?
We're at 22, and then we also have delivery on there as well. For an additional, what, seven or eight?
We've had a couple of delivery dropouts, so I'd have to go and double-check that number.
Okay, but as far as approved, like, out of the X-zone, we have delivery out of the.
We're around number eight, I believe.
Okay, so 22 plus eight. Thirty, thirty ways.
But we're talking retail storefronts tonight.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, so 22. So I've got two out of seven, or one out of seven?
How do you turn back the hands of time on this one? Kind of like the same thing, it's like, this is something we should have thought, you know, we, we've always, we've all been asking for this for a while now, so how do, how do you unring that bell? I don't know, but I agree that we, we, while we, on one hand, we have to be responsible in, like we're saying, not, not, not setting these guys up for failure and encouraging their success, that's the razor's edge, we, I mentioned, you know, a few months back, and on the other side is, you know, how do we not pull the rug out from under, not being, not out of kindness or anything like that, but out of a fair, impartial measurement, or giving them a fair chance of what they've already done without, because then, then the opposite effect happens, then you start discouraging people of coming in a new business because this is on cannabis, but what about anything else that we start voting on down the road? They're going to say, is, are we reliable, are we, or are we reliably unreliable? Which is that? And so, we're, we're kind of stuck there in a conundrum, so I don't know that I would suggest capping it where we stand, but giving us, giving them a little bit of runway, I don't know, around number 30, I don't know, and, and go from there. I don't know, and that's just an arbitrary number, there's no math or science. I apologize to you, Commissioner. I can't give you a number, but yeah.
No, I absolutely agree, and, and 100%, these are great businesses that are happening, great for revenue for the city, we are a pro-business city, it's capitalism at its finest. I would love to make the recommendation of taking HDL's recommendation and keeping that ratio 10 to 1. Based on, based on our population, right?
So, we would, we would have to essentially allow enough present cannabis businesses that have gained their CUP to go out of business before we get down to the actual cap that we're setting. So basically, wait long enough to where you reach, you know, what is it, 10, it'd be 10 or 11?
We're currently at nine storefronts.
Yeah.
So cap it at 10, based on our city's population.
Well, I, so I want to clarify things, so technically, we could have up to 22 that have already been permitted that will open, or something close to it, so we can't really set it at 10, because we're already in it to 22.
Well, but this is now the procedural piece, right, that we don't want to get into the nitty-gritty, I thought you were recommending.
Yeah, so I made my recommendation, which is cap now at where we're at.
I mean, that would keep, that would make us heavier, much busier than, than, what is it? Close to, like we said, 1.4 million in San Diego at 36, you know what I mean? So it's like over-dense, and if we already have, are hearing the community speak up at 9, 22, I don't think it's going to get any.
So, is the idea to, to hold the, like, follow, obviously, you know, they're permitted, 22 of them, and then as they go out of business, it's going to keep going down to 10, and then all of a sudden, we'll just have 10 at any given time? We'll just process one at a time to keep it at 10? Is that the idea?
I'm not going to pretend to know what the process or procedure would be, or the appropriate way to handle, you know, a failed business concept, unfortunately, you know, again, we had the best intentions, but.
This chair.
I understand your idea, I think, of wanting to set the cap at what the current number is, but if you knew there was a mechanism that made sense that over time, some period of time, five years, 10 years, don't know, a, a mechanism that made sense that over time would get the number down from 22 to a better number, or lower number, would you go, yeah, I don't think the cap ought to be 22 then, because if there's a way to get it down to one out of 10,000, that's where it ought to be? And if the answer to your question would be, yeah, I, I'd be for that, then I think we ought to set the cap for what we want the cap to be, and then the hard work is, how do you, how do you implement a process where you have more than that now, applications in the queue, but we know where we want to go, at least we know where we want to go, we can work on the mechanism to get there, and I think there are mechanisms, I've had some discussion with staff about that, and I'm not saying it's the right answer, but there are mechanisms, I mean, there's a renewal process for the cannabis business permit every two years, things can happen.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that maybe my raising, let's raise hands, was a little premature, because it was only part one of two. I think the idea was, let's stop processing right now, and then let's find a number would have been the next, it, it should have been included on that, so, happy to go down. Commissioner Kleepack.
I think this is a situation where grandfathering could come into play, like, those who are in the process can stay in the process, even if we set a cap, and I, and I do agree, I think for the sake of having diverse businesses, I, I like the idea of a cap, but it may be one of those things where, you know, it gets worse before it gets better, but if somebody goes out of business, they don't necessarily get replaced with another one, but we're also leaving those in the queue.
Well, I think, I don't want to get too far into the weeds with this, but the, it's in, the entitlement goes with the land, and then there's some rules about the timing of things and how, if a business is going to replace them and so forth, so, it kind of depends on what happens afterwards, if there's a new owner, if they have to go through the CUP process, or if it's a zoning administrator approval, it, it kind of depends. I, I think maybe that's something that staff can work out when they come back in January, but, I don't know, should we vote on, should we, yes, Vice Chair?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I just want to get these numbers down, and I, I have a proposition. 22 CUPs have been approved, nine of which are open, and so what Commissioner Rojas was saying, 30, for example, that would, that would give us eight more that are already in the queue, they're, they're between submission and CUP approval, right? How many are in between having submitted and having a hearing?
31.
There's 31. Okay, so if we, if we capped it at eight, then eight of those 31 would have a chance of getting in, and I would recommend we, we cap it at 30 for now, and have some mechanism to determine which eight to further along in the process, or something like that. And then, since we're, we're going to come back to this at a later date, and then council's going to talk about it, getting that number down, having some mechanism to shrink that, so, once the first 30 get in, you know, the, the number automatically goes down somehow as they go out of business, if that ever happens.
Okay.
That's my proposal.
Do you, do you want some kind of backstop to it, to say like, okay, we'll process up to 30, and then as they go out of business, if they go out of business, that then, within a certain period of time, or at the point that we reach 15 are open, we will revisit it and then come up with a new, like, a new number, or I.
Yeah, I, I like that kind of wiggle room, you know, 10 to 12, maybe 15, keeps us at a reasonable ratio, population-to-store ratio, but keeping like you're suggesting, should city council decide to go further, I would love to take the city of San Diego example and say that it should be equally distributed across council districts.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one, because not, not all council districts have the space, you know, so that's a, that's interesting.
Just an idea, again, it seems like it worked lovely in San Diego, it could help us here.
Okay, well, going off of what Vice Chair said, and I don't want to steal your thunder, so take it away from me if you want it back, what do you guys think about, we process 30, and then that becomes the de facto cap, and then no more processing after that, then we have some kind of trigger to where, once we reach 15, wherever that is in time, once it reaches 15 that are currently open, then we revisit it to see if we want to extend more CUPs, or if we want to keep it at 15, or keep going down to 10, or do it as a proportion of population, whether, you know, we're around or not around or in the ground, I don't know, so.
So I sort of understood what you were saying, if we're starting with a cap of 30 now, how are we ever getting to a cap of 15?
I guess it would, it would naturally go down, and then at 15, it would trigger a review for the future planning commission or future.
But at that point, the cap would still be 30 on the books.
No, I, I would say like, we stop at 30, and then no more processing until we get down to 15. I don't know if that's reasonable or not.
So the real, so the real cap is 15?
Yeah, let's process 30, but it's really 15.
Have 22 in, if we already have two in.
I could agree to that. I could agree to what you just said.
But that's like, what, down, what, 20 years or 10 years?
Yeah.
Or see.
Yeah, he didn't say it right now.
My daughter, my daughter can enjoy 30 cannabis stores in Costa Mesa.
And then probably 29, and then 28.
Yeah, I can agree to that.
You're slowing the train down instead of an abrupt.
I can agree to that.
Does, who, does anyone have any additional thoughts beyond that, like, process up to 30, wait till it goes down to 15, trigger a review at 15 for a future planning commission, of which we'll probably be.
Great idea, but I don't know if we'll get away with it.
I don't like the way you're saying it, and I don't want to get hung up on the semantics. Cap is 15.
Yeah.
We'll continue processing applications until 30 have been approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But why do we need?
Because that's being fair to the people in the queue.
22, but we already got 22 approved. What's, what's the difference of those eight more that are going to, why are they going to be like...
We don't know yet because only nine are open of the 22 that we've already approved, so we don't even know what 30 looks like.
Because we've led them down the primrose path. They're going to get a fair shot.
I know. And I think one of the, that was one of the notes that I put, are we, and so like, sort of like on Commissioner Kleepak's comments, like, why are we bending over backwards and trying to figure out Costa Mesa charity opportunity here when this is the cost of doing business, like we said, right? Any kind of business can rise, many restaurants we see open up and then close out because, you know, they, they didn't get enough traffic. Lately, I've seen so many restaurant closures happening in the community because they need to adapt. So it would be no difference in the change of process. We've, I feel like we've been cruising comfortably so that the city can focus on key issues. I think people are kind of tired of this topic already, want to move on. We already got 22 approved. Why keep opening that door when we already know that, one, financially, we're not going to see any increased revenue? We already know many of these are going to fail. So then why even go there? You know what I mean? Like, why open up that rule?
Fairness, fairness maybe, you know? I mean, I, I made my motion, so...
Yeah. I mean, I would also like fairness, but, you know, society and business, the business model, capitalism is not.
Should we, should we vote on your motion then, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Is everyone okay with that or do we want to keep going? Because I think this is fun. I could talk about it all night.
You just reiterate, sorry.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to, the cap is 15.
Yes.
But we are going to process up to 30.
Applications.
And then it'll just go where it goes long after we're gone. Yeah. That's, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I would just say that leaves 23 applicants who have submitted applications are at various points in the process out in the cold. So that's, that makes me feel uncomfortable, but fine. I think 30, sure, that's the number I was thinking too, but I am hesitant about that. And then 15, whether that's the right number or not, I have no idea where these numbers come from. Why HDL chose one out of every 18,000? But this is, this is like kind of an even number, right? So, yeah, I just want to say that, but yeah, I, I agree.
Okay. All right, let's bring it to a vote. The motion is, well, soft motion, is we're going to process up to 30, but the cap is 15. Raise your hand if you agree. Is that seven? Is that seven or six?
Six.
Six.
Ah, so close.
Nearly perfect. Okay, okay.
How much weed can we possibly need?
I...
Seriously.
Yeah.
Chair, Eric.
Yes, yes, sir.
If I may be...
Hold on, everyone. Yes, Tark...
If I may be heard on a procedural matter, it is approximately 11 o'clock, a couple minutes to 11 o'clock. We've gotten through four of these. My recommendation is that we stop now, we could take a vote on the four if we want to send it where we are, continue this item to the next planning commission hearing to further...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Preziosi, to staff. If we process the other four by the next planning commission meeting, are you still on track for January 19th? Is that, like, are you going to get hung up at all if we only do half tonight? I think it'll go faster the next time.
No, I think, I agree. I think the planning commission can, I think the planning commission could continue it off to the next hearing and we'd still be okay because we wouldn't have to write or prepare another report.
Okay. That you would not have to?
We would not really have to. I mean, we might prepare some short matter-of-fact of what happened, but beyond that, it really wouldn't be a report. It would just be, we're going to continue the other four that we haven't, that the commission's about discussed.
All right. Procedurally, other than just saying we'll continue the item to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, do we need to motion anything formally to close it out?
I would suggest keep the public hearing open, continue it to the date, well, keep, keep the public hearing open, continue it to a date certain where we are now, so there would be no further public comments on the item. It's still a deliberation for the planning commission.
Okay. So public, the public hearing is still open on this, but we will not be receiving public comment?
Correct. You've, you've already closed the public portion, public comment portion.
Public comment of the public meeting.
We're just going to freeze the hearing where it is now and continue it to the next meeting.
Okay. And we'll continue it to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting?
Correct.
And we'll pick it up from there?
Correct.
Does that sound okay?
Yes.
All right. So that brings us to old business, new business, there is neither, and we'll move on to departmental reports, starting with a very patient Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reports from the public works department. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.